Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council's Work Session. My name is Juan Dardy Williams. I'm Chair and all City Council members Tuesday, March 20 of 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:40 PM. Ms. Houston, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Madison.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on to committee business, we're going to change things around a little bit. I know they said presentation by Jackie Parker, Director of Economic Development, but we're going to go with the presentation by Shilla Dowford, Executive Director of Impact Harrisburg. Ms. Ford and Mr. Hudson, welcome.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, what we'd like to do today is defer a pencil ball for you here. Brian Hudson, the board member and I, the executive director of Impact Harrisburg. And we wanted to give a brief presentation on what we have done thus far in terms of economic development within the city of Harrisburg. You just issued had in front of you a document that goes past that folder. And I'm going to use this, Mr. Hudson, how we still basically walk through the components of our presentation today.
Okay.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you know that we were established by the Harrisburg Strong Plan as a private nonprofit, I took an opportunity to look over the components of the provisions within the Harrisburg Strong Plan that's specifically to the development of this private nonprofit, which we have named Impact Harrisburg. And I think for a while, I'm not going into detail about the components of it because we don't have the time for that. But it is important to note that it did talk about sparking, acting as a catalyst for economic development. And it also talked about really diversifying the job structure within the city of Harrisburg as acting as an impetus for that initiative that's identified specifically in the Harrisburg Strong Plan. So, we provide funding, you know, we've got $13 million and some change. And then we funded approximately 14 projects. And of those, I said five, but actually six are completed thus far.
Oh, okay.
So, you turn the page, yes. And please feel free, I didn't have time to just interject.
Okay.
To do this. What I did was to pull from the document that goes to every board member in every meeting, which is the matrix on page two, these are the projects we have funded thus far. Just very quickly, the Microsoft Office 65, 365 projects, that's completed. And we get to, we'll talk about this, we'll circle back around to the multimodal collaborative facility that we set out set, that that is a collaborative facility. It is one that we have funded where we have provided funding both to the city of Harrisburg, but also to Capital Region Water. The board wanted specifically for the two entities to work together in partnership around that collaborative because we thought it was so important to the city of Harrisburg. Mr. Hudson, I defer to you in that regard. You may want to add something to that or perhaps later.
Well, first of all, let me say thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Shilla mentioned, I'm a board member of Impact Harrisburg, but also sort of the CEO of the Pennsylvania House of Finance. So, it's a great partnership for us to be part of this as we've invested and will be investing some of our dollars in the city of Harrisburg. The multimodal project is one of many that in some way or fashion PHFA as well as Impact Harrisburg money will be going into also. And some of the other projects that are on this particular list, so let me stop here and let you finish.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Community First Fund, you saw the announcement last week, and we're very pleased and proud that we were to announce that we have, in partnership with PHFA, which has provided the lion's share, $650,000, has come to match our $350,000. And that is really a catalyst for change. And that was to establish the Harrisburg Business Affinity Fund. There was some good press on that. We're working not only with PHFA, but in addition to working in partnership with PHFA, we're also working with Community First Fund, and they will serve as the loan administrator.
And our goal and the reason for participating in the fund was to get a start, first of all. That $650,000 combined with Impact Harrisburg's $350,000 brings it to $1 million. But we do plan on going out and asking other financial institutions or foundations to contribute to that fund also. So, PHFA wanted to be the catalyst, if you will, to have the fund reach a substantial size. One of the criteria was to not have interest rates or on the loans to be above 5%.
Okay.
It's typical to a program that we run in Philadelphia and other monies that we have with Community First Fund. In Philadelphia, for instance, we've given $1 million to another enterprise fund in Philadelphia to lend loans ranging from $5,000 to $50,000, not to exceed there in the range of 3% to 5%. We've also given Community First Fund $2 million to do funds for higher interest rates. But for this fund, we did not want the rate to go over 5%. And then the goal is to grow that fund and get other participants. And that's part of our mission is to try to help grow that fund to a substantial amount forward.
I have a question since we're on it. I know the city used to have our revolving loan fund. Was there any talks about trying to use some collaborative effort? Because we're not doing anything with ours right now.
Yes, we have actually thought about that, but until we can see what this fund does and if it actually addresses the need that as we have prescribed it, then we would really talk about that. But, you know, the funds really have to address the targeted population that is not being addressed. And those are the people who are really trying to get businesses going, not just the ones that are established and growing, but those who have, you know, the entrepreneurs. So, that's what we're trying to see first.
Isn't this an opportunity for them to grow businesses? This is the why we're...
The impetus.
Right. This is the primary purpose of this is to make sure that we provide this funding for them because those who cannot obtain funding at other institutions, this is a perfect ideal for them.
We have financial institutions saying that same reason, so we put our money in our pockets.
Okay.
Put $650,000.
Well, thank you very much for putting your $650,000 into this fund.
And I think the fund can do that. They're trying to put a front end on to have advisors help pull the budget with forecasts, get them ready to apply for a loan. But we wanted to be at the table so we can send a message to, you know, not only to the financial institutions, but other entities to come to the table also.
How much are we having in our fund?
I really don't know. I'm probably supposed to bring it out. And I think too, what we're, what the target is also to make sure that, as Brian said, to make sure that those people who are not quite ready to even get to funding, to even be able to apply, that they have enough assistance to, you know, understand what a business plan is, to understand how to, you know, do the certain things that are needed to have a business in the first place. So, Charlie and I have been working on some outreach and we're working on some with other partners like Score, SBDC, Credit, to those partners to come together to actually have a portal to help those who want to start a business before they even get to funding because we know that it's very difficult to get to the funding if you don't, you know, have the basics in place. So, we're really trying to make sure those people get to that, you know.
But those efforts happen outside the actual fund that we have. We're not using the funds to do that.
If I may talk about that just briefly.
Okay.
That is Impact Harrisburg's initiative, and Jackie Parker's a member of our board, and it was something that the board collectively decided it would engage in, which was to bring, once again, additional partners to the table. And so, what we did is we provided outreach to Score, to Credit, Capital Region Economic Development Corporation, and to the Small Business Development Center, and to the Small Business Administration. And they have been very good partners with us in working to put together that piece, that what we call the toolbox. So that, but also, I don't think that it is, I think it is imperative that we also understand that Community First Fund understands that that is an important component of this loan fund. And I know that the city had some concerns about micro lending. And so, what we did is we worked in partnership with Community First Fund to get the level at which they will make a loan down to $1,000, which is a pretty small dollar amount.
Right.
And so, that's a pretty, I think we're very proud and pleased that we were able to really work with those partners to get this online in that regard. And we will continue to work with those partners and increase that. I also want to mention that one of the men has a, they have their African-American affinity group. One of our board members, Brock, is within the T-Bank, and their African-American affinity group has also agreed to work in partnership with us to provide technical assistance. So, we really do have a holistic approach to this.
It's, it's, it's new. And it's a outside the box thinking, trying to help the small businesses. It's easy to come in after we're successful, but we need to generate that money now. And that's the reason why we're at the table. So, the $650,000 from PHFA was there to do just that. If I were to mirror this to what we're doing in Philadelphia, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, but I wanted it to look something like the program that we're doing in Philadelphia to bring it here. And that's one of the reasons why we have the $650,000 there. And could that possibly, will we be interested in making an additional contribution?
That was my next... That was my next question. But we need to see where we are.
I can't say that my successor would be as generous as I am at this point.
Yeah. I don't think he would be.
I wanted to put something in place that's sustainable, but at the same time helps the city. And in addition, we went back to Community First Fund and said, would you be willing to put some of your other money in this fund? And the answer to that was yes, that would be at higher interest rates because they have a cost of capital.
Okay, yeah, but that's understandable, yeah.
Be willing to bring that to the table. So, we're already in a process of growing the fund, and far as I would say, more than merit, because I think we have a window of opportunity here to establish something that's going to work.
So, what are you doing as far as to presenting your program with the minority business? Are you starting, are you doing what Ms. Parker's talking about, you know, having a show where you're introducing the technical parts of it before you get to the loan part of it?
Yeah, so Community First Fund does some of that, but this front end that we're talking about, putting on with Score and Credit and Small Business Group, Impact Harrisburg will be doing that.
Okay.
And that's what PHFA does not do because we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And I think we can create that as part of this fund, in fact. That's what we're trying to do now.
Okay, go ahead, Ms.
It's a good story.
It is, it is.
We're very, you know, so the time here, this, I think, before it was the opportunity to talk about this.
Just getting back to, you know, our fund, because I know we haven't done anything in our fund in a very, very long time. It didn't stop prior to since when Mayor Thompson got in, we stopped doing the revolving loan fund.
We could do it in-house. There isn't any reason that we couldn't excel through the capacity. But again, what I'm hoping that the city will do is, and City Councils, is to see exactly where it's needed, and are we going to be able to target the population that really needs the money? And that's, you know, that's something that we can do now that we, through parking, we feel would, Impact Harrisburg or Impact Harrisburg Community First Fund, are they able to do that? If you look now at the statistics, no one has done it because that's what we're talking about. So, I want to make sure that that gets done and that that's a target population.
It was, you're right.
If you look at this fund now, any business can go in it. So, that means the businesses that are established, the people that we know, businesses that we know, if they're in Harrisburg, can access this money. So, that's great. We want them to grow, we want them to be able to get loans. But can we target the population that needs the money? And how do we do that? There's no set aside in this, except for the Community First Fund is separating one pool of money, and then there's this other joint fund, okay? But even in that fund, there's no set aside for micro lending. There's no set aside.
When you talk about, you talk about targeted population. Why do you feel that you can't target the population in the city of Harrisburg?
No, I'm hoping. It hasn't been done. We haven't been able to help.
What initiative have you undertaken to make that happen?
We've been out doing business growth in Allison Hill and Uptown, we've had meetings. But now with this fund, we're hoping that that will, you know, stimulate it even more. We've been working with Community First Fund since this administration. But now we have a pool, as they mentioned, that, you know, is strictly for the city of Harrisburg. But along with this, in the city of Harrisburg, is there that population that needs to grow from grassroots? And how do we help? I mean, and we've talked about this before. I get people that come in every day with business plans and ideas, but we don't have the capacity to help guide them to that next level, to get to the funding. So, now there's a funding pool. I think that's great. That's what we want. Is it going to be able to target those people who need the money and the assistance?
So, you're saying there's a, are you saying there's a missing block? Because you're saying that we don't have, you're saying we don't have the capacity.
There has been a missing block that we're trying to address through this fund and through efforts with our partners and things that we hope will even go faster now with this fund.
And that's the technical training side that we're trying to put on the front of this. But at the same time, you know, doesn't mean you can't come to the table or something.
Right.
And we moved our $650,000 from a loan to a grant.
Okay.
You know, initially, what I had discussed with Community First Fund about was having a 1% loan. And then I said, look, you know, we're going to make it as cheap as possible, we'll do that to a grant. So, our $650,000 goes and it pays in as a revolving loan. And I understand the city has $1 million, but you want to hold that million, do you get everything just right? Or can you put $250,000? I have to put you on the spot, Jackie, but if you have...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Everybody can't talk at one time, and we're streamlining, so Mr. Hudson and then the mayor. We're not going to jump in.
If we are bringing $650,000 to the table as a corporate citizen and possibly more, I don't think we should be the only one that's definitely to make this contribution. And that's just my personal thing.
Okay. Then mayor.
Yeah, I would just say that the city has a very poor experience with administering a revolving loan fund. It didn't work. It was prone to corruption. It cost taxpayers millions of dollars. I have great confidence in the Community First Fund, and I think that this fund has a lot of promise and is a very positive step. But I think a sort of cautious, go slow approach to doing exactly what Jackie said is the right approach here, which is making sure that the fund is successful in getting money in the hands of folks that really need it. And I think the city would consider a potential future transfer of money into the fund. But I think it's a little premature yet, and I just, I would caution us all just to recognize the sort of history here in the city.
Well, we already know the, I don't know if you know the history. Oh, okay.
I think part of the history, I think part of the history that it was administered by the city, internally by the city.
Right.
And I think that's where a lot of the missteps were taken within, when we administered it. I feel like this is a, I'm not saying, you know, all the answers are there, but I, one thing I do know is it just sitting there is not benefiting no one.
Exactly.
You know, and it's been, and it's been sitting there for that purpose, to generate, you know, small business growth. So, I am sort of in agreement in a way of, you know, I'm, we're thankful that we have Mr. Hudson at the table who was able to make moves to kind of make that fund worth something where it can benefit a pool of people. But if he wasn't at the table, where would we be in as far as trying to make sure that, you know, we're not just constantly just sitting on this money and not, we have, either way, this is a high, it's a high-risk thing regardless of what this fund is, you know? There's, there's statistics to show that there's not a big, you know, there's a lot of delinquencies and people defaulting on these loans, but these are high-risk loans. But these are things that need to happen as far as taking this risk within our community as far as investing in small businesses. So, I just don't want us to continue...
While that is true, I don't know if, you know, if the city's role or any role is taking on high risk with taxpayer dollars. So, there has to be a balance. I think that's the, the point is that this, that this fund has great promise, has been established, could be very successful, and we'd like it to be. And potentially, it could be an opportunity for the city to invest in. So, I think that's the positive story of where we are now. It hasn't given out any money yet, it hasn't made any loans, the spotlight's on, and if it, if it works effectively, and I think it can, again, I've seen the Community First Fund do really, really good work, then, then we've got a real, real win. But we, it's, 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 there are potentially lots of ways that we can be investing in our small businesses, and this is just one, one option on the table. And we should see if it's successful and if it works. And if so, then maybe we should invest in it.
Just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just a, just a question in regards to like that money in specific. Is that act, was that money awarded through like a program that was issued to the city to be able to do it? Is it like, or is it earmarked for that purpose? You see what I'm saying?
It had a lot, it had a lot of sources, various sources, I think, from years ago.
Right.
Some of it, a small, CDG, a small portion was Enterprise Zone. I don't know. I can give you the list, I can't think of them off the top of my head. Some we have called the state and said, ask, you know, that's what it was for, is revolving loan funds for businesses.
But we've been cautious with taxpayers' money for the last six years or four years. But do we stop doing, we have this bulk of money, do we stop, you know, trying to make sure that, you know, you're doing redevelopment, we ask some people to come here to develop. We're developing buildings, office buildings, high income for them, so why don't we do something for the small person?
Exactly.
So, if we're concerned about developers coming here doing millions of dollars and renovating these buildings for high apartments at a cost that our people in the city of Harrisburg cannot afford, so why are we not looking at small business to encourage development here in Harrisburg? And we have this money. I don't want them to discourage you at all. I want you to kind of pattern what you did in Philadelphia, of course, they have millions of people, we don't. But what we can do, we can mimic it right here in the city. So, what do we need to do? You have a database of individuals that you can work with collectively, come in here and help them with the technical issues, and get it off the base and run it. Because there's a lot of individuals in the city of Harrisburg are looking at us and saying, well, you're continuously having developers come in here, what are we have, what's the advantage of the small business individual here that wants to open a small business? We're encouraging the developers, but we're not encouraging small business. So, why we need to look at a step of holding money? We need to release some of that money. Even with the Martha Square situation, 2% African-Americans and minorities working on that, that project? I'm outraged. We should stop it today. What is the city doing? They're looking at me. I got beat up today about that. We have 50% population African-Americans, 20% Latinos, and 30% other. Where are the MBE, WBE workers?
We're going to, if I may, that's the issue.
Well, I'm just telling you, I'm telling you what I've been, all weekend, I've been beat up in conversations at events. So, I just want you to know that I'm really happy about this money coming to the city of Harrisburg, and I will do everything I can to, you know, to help you guys get this off the, and like you said, you have the database, you have a good database that could help us with all the technical issues that we need. We can target the population, if that's what we need to do, then they need to tell us how we target that population and work with Ms. Parker. What's the communication here? We need to communicate here. We're not working together. We need to collaborate and work together and try to make this happen.
Yeah, we'll put a good front end on it and make it work.
Okay.
I believe this is the right way to do it, and that's why we put our money in.
Okay.
I have one more question about the, as far as like the administration of the loan. I guess what, so as far as who can apply, is there any type of targeted population that, back to Jackie's point, I guess there's no, necessarily no set asides within the loans? Like what is the criteria to be able to qualify?
No, and you know, I have to say that the Impact Harrisburg Board talked about that, and you run into issues of being unduly discriminatory when you do that.
Oh, really?
So, we did have some discussion about that, but we did talk about the fact that Community First Fund does in fact service, if you will, through their services, they provide loans to those who would be institutional, excuse me, categories. And so, they would, they would provide this lending service to low-income individuals, people of color, and those who are, might be considered marginalized within our community. And I would like to take us back to, once again, my, my re-reading of the Harrisburg Strong Plan. Okay, those, not the whole plan.
It's a little long.
It's a lot. But those provisions, that section five of the plan, I think it is or section seven, that speaks specifically to, it articulates the vision for what Impact Harrisburg is supposed to be doing. And it does speak to looking at members of the disadvantaged sections of our community and really providing opportunities for those who might have been left out traditionally. It speaks specifically to that, and that's what the board has done. I'd like to say one other point in this regard, that is that I want to be clear about the fact that this, that Impact Harrisburg has been very chronic in finding, in partnering with Community First Fund. They have a very good record when it comes to really managing their loan portfolios. They have a very, they have a record that suggests that they do a very good job. They are in this business, so we didn't decide to do it ourselves. This is nothing that is homegrown. We went to the experts, we don't want to, and so I think what we did, the suggestion that we might, I'm suggesting that we are really following what I think is the fiduciary obligation to really manage, to make sure that our funds are managed in a way that is highly responsible. And that there is also, in the actual documents, the partnership with PHFA, with Community First Fund, and with Impact Harrisburg, there is an accountability piece. So, we have accountability at every step of the way. We intend to ensure that these funds are managed well.
The interest rate cast, this 5% was set for a reason, to make sure that those who need it can get it. We have another piece of money with Community First Fund that could go 8% or 9%. So, if someone can get a bank loan from a bank, then they can go to the bank. What I don't want to happen is them coming in and getting the 5% of money.
Okay.
And since we got $650,000 in there, I do expect to be talking to Community First Fund on a regular basis.
Oh, yeah.
As to the type of loans that we, they're seeing, and which one should be funded, should be funded. Because it's very easy for a well-capitalized, financially stable entity to come in and say, well, I want that 5% of money. But that's not who we're trying to help. And I don't have a problem weighing in since we have $650,000. I mean, we're going to book more, and that's exactly what we do. And I had that conversation with the president of Community First Fund.
Hold on, just a minute, for just a minute. Ms. Houston, would you please acknowledge that Mr. Majors and Ms. Daniels have arrived, please? Put that on record. I just want to make sure that's on record.
Okay, just for the record, Mr. Majors and Ms. Daniels have arrived for the work session on 3/26/2018.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Madam Chair, I apologize. I wanted to know if you want, we didn't want to be on the project, so unless you have more questions, we're here to answer questions.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Majors is just getting here, so I didn't know if he wanted to...
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, please. I know, I'm sorry, mayor, did you have something to say before I?
I was just saying, I think that's, that's exactly what we want to see, to make sure that the fund is, is getting to the people who need it.
Sure, sure.
And that, just as PHFA is looking to potentially invest more money in the future and bring in additional investors, I think, I think the fund has been adequately seeded now, and the question is, will it perform the way we want it all to perform? And if it does, I think it'll be a great benefit to the city and something worth investing in.
Okay. Ms. Troy.
Moving forward.
Yes, please.
We sure won't see it. I'm just going to give a very quick, one line, if you will, summary. That is a project that has got the story, they say outside the building, facade improvement and some internal refurb maintenance issues that are, they're taking care of. So, that is, that should be done by the spring of this year. Ham and Theaters just started, this is phase two of their project, and there was actually a press announcement recently where they thanked Harrisburg for its, for its funding, that we, they've managed to actually raise the additional funding needed to actually get that project done. This is important because this is the last phase of their project. Tri-County Community Action Commission, that's the facade improvements up on Jerry Street, and that's going to be starting in the spring and fall of this year. Tri-County Housing Development Corporation, that is the Walter Square project. And there was one home that was recently, for which there was a ribbon cutting, and we're pleased that we're part of that. There will be four houses that actually will be demolished, and we're essentially paying for that, that's Impact Harrisburg, when I say we. And that's an ongoing project. The playground resurfacing, everyone knows that that's going to, that that project is ongoing. We funded that, and we'll see the dollar amount in the first column there, $250,000. The Harrisburg Development Authority, Ms. Parker's office is working with the authority on, in the school district, on getting title to the properties so that those properties
on, in the school district, on getting title to the properties so that those properties can be raised, and so I think that's a demolition project. Harrisburg River Rescue is completed, that was the buildout of their building. Paxton Street Home Benevolance Society was a soft cost pre-planning, a grant that is completed. Salvation Army is working on its, you know, they've secured the site at 29th and.
Oh, yeah. They're always.
Yes, the old ones. And so, yes, and they are working on getting their additional funding, and we're going to talk to them about moving that project forward. TLC Construction Renovations, there's about $50,000 left punchless issues there, so that should be completed by April of this year. Webpage, which is right around the corner.
What, excuse me, what is TLC? What are they doing?
TLC is the hub.
I know the hub, but are, oh, is that in reference, yeah, I was just there the other day.
Yes, it is. So Mr. Hudson can tell you a little bit about the other project, actually, that they have.
Is that the veterans' home?
Yes.
Okay.
We funded them two years ago with housing tax credits, which is a federal credit.
Okay.
Do 24 units of veterans.
Yeah, I was there the other day.
So that was the catalyst that really brought this to, and Paxton Street Home is into us now to do 45, 50 units of housing on Paxton Street. We're going to make that funding decision until next month, but right now, they're in the hunt, so I can't.
Okay.
They're not really funding it.
Okay.
It's their second or third time in for funding. That, the credit brings the largest social capital to the table to do 40 housing. So we give them a million dollars, it's times 10, and they sell it to the neck of the investment for 95 cents on the dollar, so it brings about $945 million to the table. And that's what TLC got two years ago, and Paxton Street is looking to get. Now Salvation Army had applied to us for New Markets Tax Credit, which is a different type of credit. We didn't get any credits, and I lived at Community First Fund, so they're looking naturally to try, to do that, to try to finish off their project here. But that's some of our other partnerships with the project.
Well, the veterans' home is very impressive. I had an opportunity just this Friday to go up here and look at the hub and look at the veterans' home.
In an area that's certainly needed.
Certainly needed, sure, and, well, we need it for the homeless veterans, too.
That's right, that's right.
It's going to service, you know, to take them off the streets. Okay, go ahead.
So Webpage FX, I'm almost finished here. Webpage FX, of course, is the project on Front Street. That, I want to talk about that very quickly, because that's supposed to generate about 100 jobs, 125 jobs, and that's important to the city. Once again, it tied back in with the mission of Impact Harrisburg. I recall when they committed, talked to us, and they talked, and seen their application. The idea was that they would build that out, they bought the property next door, and they actually expanded their footprint, and so they got more jobs. And they, every time we've been there, that project is complete, but they were hiring more people. YMCA Camp Purdon, they have fired $20,000. That is to take what was the pool area, which is a pool, but also a large area, and to retrofit that, to make it, to expand, once again, their, their footprint for activities. And they are using the TLC construction folks to meet their MBE requirement, their DBE requirement.
I have a question. They are taking the pool area?
Yes.
It's done.
It was a big maintenance expense for the Y.
No, 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 I knew that, but I just have to do my homework here, because, you know, I was on council, and that was part of the money they were going to use for that as well. So that's, that's why I question you, because this was supposed to be done like two or three years ago. So maybe, okay.
Madam Chair, I know it's getting done.
Can I have that?
Yeah, did they not use it for that? They used it for the backyard, I mean, for the back of the?
That was part of a request that.
Oh, okay, but they didn't fund it with, okay.
The HVAC and the backyard.
I mean, I know I've been here.
It was a request, but that was never.
I know, I've been here 13 years, but I remember, because now, yeah, okay. I have to question, you know, because.
So the, the one project where we have run into what I would call some challenges is the multimodal collaborative, because the, we are hosting partnerships with Georgia County and the city, and we have Impact Harrisburg, the board establishes a 38% MBE DBE participation level, what it is, is it's aspirational, but it is a goal, given the demographics of the city, that the board saw as one that should be worked towards. And it's our understanding from, and reports from the city, that the level of participation at this point is about 2%.
Right.
We want to partner with the city and with you as the city, also, you're another arm of the city, to improve that level of participation. That is not acceptable to us. And Mr. Hudson might want to talk a little bit more about that, so you can turn the spot.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
And I know that, you know, the city and council feels a way, a certain way about MBW.
Yeah, we do.
And I feel the same at PHFA, we've actually put it into our criteria for how we run developers, meaning, you know, are they a principal partner, all the way down to the jobs that are being created. We hired a firm to assist us in doing that, and I also share that with my colleagues on the board at Impact Harrisburg, which we're looking at bringing them on board to help not only Impact Harrisburg, but the city and Capital Region Ward identify and do outreach to minorities to see how we can increase that participation. Right now, I think, as a board member, 2% is just, is unacceptable from a level of participation, given that it's also our largest piece of funding for Impact Harrisburg. So as a board member and as head of PHFA, I'm willing to help Impact Harrisburg and the city and Capital Region Ward get those participation levels. And that starts with bringing a expert in to help us do that. I don't care if we use the firm that we've identified to complement us on our building project here, or if we use another entity, but we need to have someone at the table to show us how to do the outreach, reach out to minority communities, explain what's going on, all the way down to the trees, and identify the jobs that are being created so that we can have a respectable participation with the MBE WBE. That's where we are right now. 2% is just not working, and I know the board have made discussions around this, and we're going to take this back and try to get that level up.
Okay. Well, we did, I did have a conversation with a gentleman last week that I met in the city council office, and he was really outraged behind the fact that we had a low percentage of participation for MBE WBE. And that, you know, several events that I've been in, the first thing that is conversation is, you know, we don't have enough minority participation. So, and that's what I was going to address with the mayor this week when we met, when we meet, to find out what we can do to bring that level up. And if you, we can utilize that company that you so designated, we certainly would be appreciative of you if you give that information to the city.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's the same issue that we deal with all of the council.
Sure, I understand. Because we don't have, we don't have a database, like, you know, you, you have accessibility to a database, I understand, don't you? Okay.
I'm just trying to point out, if I may, Madam Chair, that we have really extended our, you know, Impact Harrisburg has extended their participation to the city towards us on a couple of different occasions around improving the level of participation. And, you know, for my, as the executive director, time is of the essence, because, as you know, when the weather's warm, that means that land construction is working, and that means that those, those invoices are there, so their, their actions, manifest are there, and we want to get this done sooner rather than later. I don't know that we have, we don't have the benefit of a lot of time. We had that about a year ago, we've been aware of this, and we've really been working on the Impact Harrisburg side diligently to get this moving. So I just need to express that to you all, just for this opportunity.
Well, if you can't work in collaboration, then, you know, stop the program till you can find any participation.
That's the question.
That's my concern, you know, we need to do something like ASAP.
We're ready, we'll enable.
Okay, go ahead, mister.
So like, I guess, where are we as far as, I guess, the timeline of execution of the project and relationship to increasing that participation?
Just that project, or you're talking about every?
How about that project in particular?
So the contract is let, and I keep using that phrase because it matters.
It's what?
Let. The contract was put out to a public bid, there were four bids, two of them were absolutely projects that couldn't happen, and two of them were projects that could happen, and Lamb's bid, in the normal course of that, was awarded. Of the $6 million that's our impact money, this thing is, I forget the portion of it, but there's three, I believe, road pieces to this, to the $2.6 million the city got, that CRW got. So this is a significant portion of it. And the early portions of it will have more participation than the actual asphalt, when you get to the end of the day. Asphalt's the big expense portion of the contract. So, you know, I've met with Wayne, I've talked with Wayne about where this is, Mark Woolley has been working with a couple of people on participation. But I can't overstate the fact that the contract is let. There is a contract under a public bidding process, and, you know, and you can, you can work frankly around the fringes of that, but the city cannot alter a contract that is let. It's already there, it was publicly bid and publicly awarded in the force required under the law. So that is what is there. And so the other portions of it are other pieces of it that are around it. And I think, you know, Wayne has identified a number of places, including, I think, the traffic light, some of the suppliers, some of those. But I think the big expense is asphalt itself, which has a supplier, which are, you know, for asphalt, that you're not going to get. It's going to be a big dollar percentage of it.
I guess, I guess, does that have anything to do with the way, if we, like, I'm just trying to get the timeline together as far as identifying the project and identifying the funding source. So if we, I'm sure, if my timeline is correct, we probably identify the funding source of Impact Harrisburg to help fund this project before putting this project out to bid, knowing that the requirements of Impact Harrisburg to receive this funding source to do the project had such aspirational goals. So there, were there any ways, so as far as like when putting that contract out, I know it's, and I know it's already been, been bitted out, but as far as us even organizing that bid document in a way that kind of met.
That was all in there, all of that. And the other part of this is it's PennDOT, it's not just us, you know, a PennDOT contract has terms in it that are, that are set forth. Doug Lamb is one of the registered folks at PennDOT, you know, when you, you let road construct, he's actually one of the smaller ones, he's a central Pennsylvania one, as opposed to bidders from Baltimore and other places that, that, you know, actually take the money and leave town. And those were all, I think, considerations in the process. I think when Wayne can speak best to the project, I mean, all of those requirements were in there. And you get down to the, does it move forward or doesn't move forward at all? I mean, I think that really becomes the question. There is other places in the project, in the, in the grant side of it, and from my view, it's not just the grant side of it, it's the large projects we have coming from everywhere, but I think Mark is working with others to try and make participation much better. But, you know, those are the realities of a contract, is that when you put it out and you have PennDOT driving part of this train, because it's a reimbursement agreement with them, you've got, you've got to comply with their requirements, and their timetables are also there. And so, you know, so road work is when you delay it, you don't delay it a little bit, you delay it way out, you know, on a project. So there was a long lead sign to this project coming up, it was a long time in the works, and it went out with all those requirements, and you got the bid that you got.
But we're, we're familiar with this. Why are we continuing making excuses? We're familiar with how to do, you know, dealing with PennDOT. We've done a lot of contracts with grants with, with the Department of Transportation and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. You knew what the requirements were, MBE WBE, 38%. We're not meeting those goals. I don't want to hear any excuses about the city. You know what to do. If you don't know what to do, then I would suggest that you get the right individuals in here to tell you what to do and how to do it, to meet those goals. I mean, I'm just tired of hearing excuses.
And I think, if I, Madam Chair, is, I hear what you're saying, I'll be respectful, you know, we let contracts on our construction all the time, but when I dig into it, I said, tell me what you're doing.
Exactly.
And people are not going to get paid, but what I did not see is an effort.
Right.
And that's what's missing. And I'm willing to.
And it's not like we're not familiar with what to do.
Make sure, are we going to hit 38%? Probably not, but let's make that effort to make sure that we get that participation.
If we're at 2%, what does that say for a city that, that, with the ratio, the demographic ratio that we have? 2%?
So one of the things that we talked with the board about was identifying the employees on Lance's back for minority, just ways to make sure that we're counting this right, because no one was doing that. And that's what the consultant had, and I think that's what we have to do. I understand the contract is let, but we can still make a very serious effort to get this participation, and I think we have to do that. And I'm speaking both as head of PHFA, as CEO of PHFA, and as Impact Harrisburg's board member, because I do not want to prove a disbursement that has a 2% participation.
Thank you, I don't want you to either. Mr. Mark, I see you took a seat at the front, now you can get your turn to get whooped on.
No.
I'm just kidding with you.
Really.
No, sorry, what do you, we respect you coming to the table, thank you, what do you have to offer, sir?
Well, I, I think that there are pots that we have to look at in terms of contracts. Because if you look at the one project that has 2% participation rate, but there are other contracts and other departments that are doing other things. For instance, you have Jackie's department that is, things that I'm working with, the lead department and the contractors, it's 100% minority contracting. So we, that's why we're looking, we're taking a step back and we're looking at how we've spent money in the past and how we're doing it. So it's clear after the review that we're only about a third way through looking at a three-year window of how we spent money and where it was spent. But it's clear we have to do different things. And so we've implemented a couple of things. I'm working with Charles White, Shashawn, and Jackie to make sure that we do a couple of things differently as we go out with new, new contracts that we're bidding. So we've established, and we looked at our list that we currently have of MBE WBE, we've made sure that we, we verified the contractors that are currently on, and we also opened up our outreach. Shashawn and Charles have gone to various seminars recently, and also have gone to symposiums, and other companies have had introduced themselves to the minority vendors and letting them know that we're open for business. And so we've also taken a step further, and in our bid documents, we've, we've also are utilizing the pre-bid conference to talk to vendors about the bids that are currently coming up. We've expanded the list as well, we've looked to various organizations in order to get, introduce ourselves, to make sure that we're putting more vendors on the list and introducing ourselves. And then when the bids come out, we're sending those bids out to those specific individuals and companies. So we're not, we're drawing, I'm drawing a line in the sand and saying, things happened in the past, but going forward, we're doing things differently. So in addition, we've looked at our certification process.
Okay.
It, the city's certification process is very, is cumbersome.
We don't have, we don't really have a certification. I think it's, I think it's hard, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I wouldn't say we have a certification.
Well, I, I think that we have documents on there, and I think there is a certification process. And when you, when vendors come and they apply, what happens is that they go through a series of hoops, and it's a seven-page document, and after they get certified, the city is the only entity that accepts it. So a small business, that's not guaranteed to get any business once they go through the certification process. That's a cumbersome. So what we've done is that we're, we've created, that we're going to rely on other certification entities to, third parties. We'll accept theirs, but we're going to direct them to those, we're going to direct the vendors to those sites, we're helping them out, we're actually converting some of the documentation to seamless docs so that there'll be a direct link to those organizations for the vendors. So, and we've begun to track them internally and make sure that we are following up with those vendors, that we're going to refer, and to make sure that they, they are actually able to get certified. So there, there are things that are in process right now that we're doing to make sure that we are trying to reach the goals that the ordinance and city council had set for the city. And we have two very dedicated people that are working with me that are, that are going to see this thing through. And also, as I said, there are parts of the city that have great participation rates, and we're going to make sure that you know those as well.
Are you, are you in the meetings with Impact Harrisburg?
No, we would love that.
Because you should be, you should be in the meeting with Impact Harrisburg, since you're the business administrator.
We have invited the city to representatives to come to our meetings, and we do, we would welcome.
None of it.
Yes, you are, but we've also invited other city members, Jackie Parker's a member of our board, Neil Roper's a member of our board, but we also think that those with direct responsibility.
That's what I was saying, because he is.
And so we've asked, and we, because the biggest challenge is one of, I think, good communication, that's in part why we wanted to talk to you, and we welcome input from Mr. Woolley. And if I may make one other point, and that is that I think what you've just stated is laudable, I think that we still have the challenge of dealing directly with the multimodal projects. And how to improve participation levels around that, and I think it's going to take a collective effort on the part of all of us to figure that out.
Right.
To do so immediately, and to really think about the possibilities in a positive way, as opposed to in a very silent way.
I mean, the honest truth is, with time being of the essence, it's going to seem like it's going to be some type of impasse that's going to happen soon. And I can see it just happening, just by the conversation with the side of the city. And that's why I'm, that's why I'm kind of interested in, as far as like where we are with the project timeline in regards to, you know, what's being completed, and then with the project timeline in regards to, you know, what's being completed, and then the issuing of, potentially, of, you know, the board making the decision to maybe not fund the, I don't, like, I, you see what I'm saying? So I, I just know, I think we all have a goal of trying to increase minority participation on this project. I think we need to realistically look at it and see how we get it done before we get to a time period where if something is not done, then there's an impasse that causes a drastic thing to happen.
I, I think that it's, it's imperative that we, we do a couple of things. One is that we, we know that we can do things to improve the processes that the city currently has in terms of participation, and we're open to that. We're open to that in terms of making sure that we don't rebuild the wheel. So that if there, there are avenues that we can take, and there are people that have expertise in it, we're, this is a whole, this is an all-hands-on-deck sort of moment. What we don't want to do is adversely impact the city, its residents or businesses by stalling projects. So what we are going to do, we're going to get in front of it-
And how would we do that? And how would we do that?
No, no, I, I don't want to, I don't-
I mean, how would we do that if we impact that and we stop the work because they're, the city's not in compliance?
I, I, what I'm trying to say-
So what effect would it have on the residents who are-
I don't want to get to that point.
Okay, okay. But I mean, you're saying you're making a statement, so I'm asking you a question.
I'm not making a statement, I said I don't want to get to that point.
Okay, well-
So, and, and we're not against it.
Because we're hurting them right now, and I'm not sorry for interrupting you, but I think we are, the impact is hurting them right now.
Well, I think that we have a, we have a window, just as-
Okay.
-as Councilman Johnson said, to, to rectify what our participation rates are, and to take advantage of some of the organizations, in particular Impact Harrisburg, that has expertise, or at least has the avenues to that expertise to help us in, in this specific project. But I also wanted to make sure that you knew that we were not, we were not operating in a vacuum, and we're, we heard City Council, we heard the residents about our participation rates, we looked at it, we said we have to change our policies and procedures, we've done that, we're continuing to do that, we're looking, we're taking a snapshot of what had happened in the past to make sure that we can come here and we can have, we can discuss numbers about, and a way, a way forward. But in terms of a specific project, I think it's, it's that we have to sit at the table and move this project forward and increase the rates now. And so there's a certain ways we can do that, and I'm willing to come and, and sit at the-
I'll make it happen.
Very good.
Thank you.
When can we get a recap? That's what I'm interested in. Because what's going to happen is, I'm, I'm telling you, I see the writing on the wall, like, it's going to, like, I, I, if we can get some type of follow-up recap, because clearly time, like, everything is happening on the project right now. Every day we go out there, some, some work's going to be done. So as far as, I know it's, it's a very important conversation to have, but I think, you know, it's a, it's a conversation that has to happen tomorrow. And I think we have to almost kind of be engaged of recap of where we're going and how we're going to move forward before we run into a situation where we potentially may not receive funding, and then work be in approach for real, like, is this going to open up a whole new window of, of issues?
Well, if I, if I, if I may, I, I would like to sit down and, and, and talk with Sheila and, so we can see what, what it is, the issues are, and then we can get a timeline and get back to you and say, "Hey, we, we, we think that we need this amount of time in order to have periodic updates with regard to this project."
All right.
I just want to make sure that, and I've-
Well, thank you for your willingness to sit down with the Sheila and the board.
I look forward to that.
It just doesn't need to be Sheila, it just needs, it needs to be Sheila and the board.
Yes, it does, indeed, and I have a close communication with the board, and we can initially start talking, and I can talk, and the information, you know, we press forward, and we believe in getting things done, I think you see that, and that we will continue to do that. And time is of the essence, and let me say this, we appreciate your, of the input of City Council when it comes to understanding and valuing the perspective of Impact Harrisburg around all of the projects, but also really understanding the acute nature of this particular project, and sort of, and sort of suggesting that the, it is imperative that we all move quickly. I think that's important, and I will reach out to, to Mark Woolley afterward.
Look forward to the update.
Before you leave, any other questions, councilmembers? I didn't, I'm sorry. Ms. Green, nothing?
I'm on that.
Ms. Daniels?
Do I just have a question about the, what we, um, I think, I need another comment for the city brings us, or any of the paths, but do you have a follow-up on what, on what percentage of the employees reside in the city of Harrisburg?
I don't, but we have, within a year of a project, we have a right to audit, so we have not yet circled around to the audit function, but we will. It's not been, it's not been a year yet, but we will go back and audit the projects. We do have two compliance managers we're working with, and that's a part of what they will be doing on our behalf. And I'll be working with them, of course. So I will provide an update to you all.
And other than portion of employees who are working on the project, not necessarily employees who are, who are then hired once a project is put in, or worked worse?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No, I think most of my comments were encapsulated in what was said, but again, we have to focus in on, as everyone's saying, is, is the effort. And unfortunately, if it gets to that point, I mean, how do we, if we don't rectify the situation, it may get to a point where we may have to not move forward on a project. The only way some vendors and, and contractors get the point is if you actually impact one of them. As much as we want to see progress being made, if progress is being made and the answer is always, "Well, next time we'll address it," well, next time we'll address it, it'll always be the next time. So I just, I'm, I'm glad to see this dialogue happening, and hopefully we will get these answers in a rather expeditious fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Mr. Allen?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Woolley. Moving on to presentation by Ms. Jackie Parker, Director of Community Economic Development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Majors, we're live streaming. I just wanted to, we're live streaming. Welcome back, Mr. Rumless.
All right, well, this started out as an educational piece, and I know that there were some councilmembers who I knew, and maybe some that just needed an update. I know a couple of councilmembers said they know all about it, so it's okay, you don't have to pay attention, or you can give it. So anyway, so I, but I thought it was just a good time to just kind of go over what community development block grant is, eligible activities for the city, so that as you begin your deliberations of how to, you know, how to spend the money, and how to allocate the money, you can think about the, the goals of community development block grant and what it's supposed to be. So we have to start our consolidated plans required by, by the law, by the HUD guidelines, and so we're beginning our five-year consolidated plan efforts. So we had two public meetings, one was at Jacksonwood, and one was at, at Alhapp. And what that, what it is, is just open to the public to say, "What, what are your goals for the city? What are the important projects? What are the important issues that you would like to invest in?" So we'll be compiling that, that information, we'll be getting it back, but that's part of the process. We also have a sub-recipient meeting on that, on that same day, and that is for nonprofits who wish to apply for community development block grant. That deadline came and went in March, March 16th.
March 6th.
So we did have quite a few, I have to think, 16 applicants?
Yeah.
So, you know, it was very well received, and we know that there are a lot of people that are more interested in funding. Here's what, what is the annual action plan, as I mentioned, we receive an average of $2,005,000, that's with ESG, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant for our homeless and population, and also home, which is housing dollars. They must, we must admit a five-year consolidated plan, and as you see, the plan describes decent, safe, affordable housing, suitable living environments, expanded economic opportunities. Funds, funds projects that provide decent, affordable housing, services, creates jobs, we talked about that, could use for job creation, and enables nonprofits to submit requests for funding and mandates community participation. So some of the things that we have done in the past, and again, these are things that the city decided were priorities, and also based on their last consolidated plan that we had. So we've done housing, we've done economic development, programs for seniors, public facilities, infrastructures, ADA ramps, and if you ask Wayne, you know, we still need a lot of the ADA ramps around the city. So a lot of communities use their community development block grant funds for curb cuts, public services, homeless and HIV and AIDS, prevention and support, anti-crime, youth programs, planning, and all this stuff. So some of the goals that we've, you know, heard from around the city, and some of the things that are, of course, HUD goals are demolition of light removal, neighborhood revitalization, strategies which we hope to concentrate on some of our neighborhood planning as we go forward in the coming years, community development, public services, public facilities, affordable housing, of course, a big issue for the city, and we use community development block grant funds to support that and encourage that, and then homeless housing and services. This is just a graph to show how our funding, and not just us, but every state in the Union, we have seen a decline in community block grant, as we know, so every year it becomes more and more important to really be critical as to how we spend these dollars. We have a loan, as you are all aware, HUD 108 loan, yes, actually, two, thank you, two that, that we've had to fund from our CDVG funds, so $580,000 this year will be going just to finance ourselves.
How many more years do we have left on that?
Um, one of the grants-
Cut like that?
Yeah, one of the loans will be used in nineteen years.
Okay, no.
And then the other one-
Like that? You didn't use your, okay.
So these are some of the things that we did this actually. There's 20% cap on administrative costs, that's our, there's $568,000, public services, there's a 15% cap on public services, then public facilities, building demolition, housing rehabilitation, and then city programs, which could be the curb cuts, which could be lease, which could be also approximately.
Hold on, can we go back real quick? That's why I was quick. So this is for this year, right?
Well, it could be estimated, yes, if you could ever, just as we did-
So the funding we get is $2 million, and you're using the whole funding?
CBVG is the biggest part of funding, which roughly is about 1.8, 1.9. Fellow ones will go to home and the history.
But public service would be the nonprofits.
Okay.
So that could be, you know, that's, that's 15% cap.
Okay.
But we did have a request of about 1.5 million.
Yeah, of course.
Of course. Last year she won, one person won $1 million, so hey.
So anyway, I know that, you know, every year we talk about the scoring methods, and you know, how we, how the staff takes a look at it, you know, Rumless, of course, runs a tape strip and monitors our services and knows them, and you know, can, can speak to their viability, their capacity, and how they're dealing with their projects. So these are some of the things that we, we do this to, do in our scoring, and I think all of you got a scoring sheet, but we always look at complete for the application, project description, adequacy of project eligibility documentation, is it, is it a true project? And is the project still eligible by CDVG standards? Is it, is it conform to the natural objectives, load, model, benefit? And just, I think you're all aware that we sense this track that in the city is CDVG aligned.
Okay.
Project fits within the consolidated plan community priorities, project can be completed within a reasonable time span. Past performance, you know, how, how did they do before if they asked you for funding? Prior experience with other grant programs, are they, you know, are they up to date with the other grants? Have they filled those out and, and used them appropriately? Proven track record, there are not similar projects. Financial capacity, you know, oftentimes we, we have entities that, you know, are just starting, and so they don't really have good track records, and so, you know, consider if they're going to be acceptable, sub-sustainable to that one. Financial stability, not totally dependent on CDVG funds, and I think this is a critical point, because, you know, we don't really want sub-recipients to come in every year and use us as part of their, their operations, their operational functions. You know, are they just using this as a funding source every single year? Shouldn't they be out there before?
Yeah, aware of the fact, we know that we're aware of the fact that we want to be self-sustaining after.
Correct.
Okay.
Paddock of staffing, number of staffing qualifications, organizational strength, including record PPG finances, because we have two boards, you know, that are responsible, procedures manager, financial manager.
Okay.
Nice and short, sweet. Any questions for now?
I'll start with Ms. Green. Do you have any questions, Ms. Green?
Uh, right now I don't, I may need to come back.
Okay, Mr.?
Uh, no, thank you for the presentations, this is the third one I've seen. Yeah, no, but it's, I think it was helpful, it's good for my colleagues to see the information, and yeah, I look forward to reaching out to all the different people that have applied and learning about their projects and establishing a dialogue moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mattson. Mr. Johnson?
Why you say it like that?
What? I said, "Mr. Johnson."
Number, question number nine, does the project generate tax revenue for the city, county, school district? If most of the projects that we fund nonprofits, so they don't really generate-
They are nonprofit, but in some cases they do generate tax for the city, such as some other projects.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
For profits are allowed to.
Yeah.
So, is it possible?
It's possible, that's why I'm just looking at the word.
And tri-county housing, is there be doing and rebuilding some?
Right, it doesn't look like tax.
Right.
I have any other questions?
Mr. Allen?
I don't, at the second.
Mr. Majors?
No, no questions, just look forward to seeing when we start getting applications in, but just for the public, again, you know, our, our need, the need for, well, I guess the, the need for folks, well, in a different way, folks seeking grant money always outpaces what we have available. So I know it's always a difficult process every year, and we appreciate the work that you guys do and the, the collaboration that we have back and forth with council. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Daniels?
Could you repeat the, where we are in the process? Or, yeah?
Um, we are, last year we were able to have a three-person committee, we are able to retain this Tina Nixon from Pinnacle, always important to have outside. And we aren't getting a third person, I actually packed the summer today, and I will speak to the administration to make sure it's okay, because there has to be no conflict of interest, things like that. So we are in the process of getting a full committee, all the applications that were given at one time. We do have, I've skimmed over a couple of projects right now, we're in very early stages, we would like to have what we have ready for the administration possibly by mid-April.
Okay. And so you'll have it down to council soon after that?
Yes.
Okay.
So do we know, council?
Yeah, what is your, yeah?
We have, we have, there is a timeline-
Yeah.
-that we need to be effective for, get the consolidated funding.
Sure.
So I mean, I definitely can get you the information on what our timeline looks like right now. I mean, it's subject to moderate change.
Okay. And then I think just in general, a task for you guys to think about is, you know, we have a category of streets that get no funds outside of general funds to maintain. And I think it's really important for us to think about how to take care of those streets, because when you find them, they are in really, really bad shape, and they're really damaging to cars, they also create an environment that's not, that's really conducive for people to thinking there's a lot of neglect there, right? So if you could, I don't know, maybe think about where or how to start looking at those streets, because they're not going to be, their repairs are not going to be federally funded, they're not going to be state-funded, they're not going to be a low-priority state fund. So I think that's really important, because whenever you see them, there's a whole host of things that they attract that are problematic for the quality of, of life for our residents.
If you have any in mind, I mean, you said you-
Honey Street is really bad. I know Nectarine is going to be repaired, but Nectarine was an optional, like, one of the discretionary state ones, but like, Honey Street is nothing. And, and, yeah, Honey Street, and it's a hu, it's just basically a hole.
And I know, Councilwoman, I know that, working with Wayne and the city engineer and public works, they're still in the process undergoing that asphalt study, so that they are taking-
I understand about it.
Yeah, they're taking a, a complete look at every, every street in the city of Harrisburg, the, the level of, you know, the level of repair it needs to undergo, and the actual status of the asphalt, so that as the city starts moving forward, and we do have money to do things, that we are prioritizing certain, you know, streets in the city of Harrisburg so that we can- so that we can do that repaving. It's, it's a, it's a very difficult task. I know there's been years of neglect.
Isn't that project done?
As Ms. Parker stated, you know, infrastructure is going to be...
We haven't gotten all of them.
I mean, that is, that is fine, but to go along with it, I mean, obviously, our capacity of manpower and other things definitely falls into that. I agree, you know, some streets are just ridiculous, and it seems like they were repetitive, of course, but it falls more into, you know, Wayne's understanding what we are able to do, to not just keep repairing, but...
And I think the plan really, it assesses all of the streets and where they are and the repairs, but then there's no money for the, for, like, the streets that are not fanned out or federally fundedly repaired, and so, you know, it's really bad.
Well, if you sent me some of those two, like, Honey, I don't have to, I do know, I can check the land and see how they fall in.
And the really bad part of Nectarine will be, that'll be redone with the Mulder Square project, I believe, so I think that's taken care of, but, like, Honey Street, there's no prospect for that street to be repaired, and, yeah, and they're just, I mean, if you're familiar with Shelby Lee Adams, a photographer, a lot of those streets look like they could be in his photographs, which isn't a good thing.
This is an interesting historical point tying these two discussions together. It is true that when the city went to impact Harrisburg originally, we had asked for money to pave neighborhood streets, and we did not ask for money to do the green infrastructure or the major project that Impact Harrisburg wanted to fund, precisely because we were concerned that we didn't have significant resources to pave the majority of miles in Harrisburg. And Impact Harrisburg is the one that actually insisted on collaborating with CRW and splitting the funds and doing a major sort of green infrastructure stormwater management program with the funds. And that took what was essentially a straightforward request that I think would have had a lot more opportunity for more people to bid on, and it severely complicated the project, and it turned into a massively complicated project with a lot of green infrastructure, which I think probably net result, I mean, this is what we're dealing with, but net result, fewer people were qualified and able to bid on that project. So, just, just as a historical point, we had asked just originally for half the money to go to neighborhood streets, and the other half to go to a straight paving job of Third Street, and it was Impact Harrisburg that redid that and put in a lot of the complicated things, which has led to a very complicated contract, a very slow and deliberative process, and some of the history for, for why we are where we are.
Okay. Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Parker, and thank you, Rumulus, and I'm certainly happy to see that we have 16 applications. Are there new nonprofits that apply?
Yes, there are some that have to do with, very interesting projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are several that I would be very interested in the process to see if it's able for them to get the complete amount of our assistance, but let's do a new batch.
Okay.
There are some older ones.
All right, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm good.
You too, as well. Moving on, city council members, we will go to budget and finance, and Mr. Allen, who's the chair, will now take over the work session. Mr. Allen?
All right, thank you very much. I believe, up for discussion first, we will take a look at Bill 1 of 2018. Should I, do you want to go ahead and read that into record?
Sure. Bill 1-2018 is an ordinance amending the appropriation and expenditure procedures in Section 2-307.4 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to increase the budgetary transfer threshold from $20,000 to $50,000.
Just a point of clarification, just to sort of close the loop on the previous conversation. You know, the Third Street project, you know, was funded and undertaken with the assumption that there was grant money from Pendite and from Impact Harrisburg. So, the project, as it stands now, does not have enough funding, you know, in the bank account, literally, sort of speaking to Mr. Johnson's point, you know, it's not, without those grants, the completion of the project cannot happen. So, that does become an issue with cash flow, something I've always been very concerned about. So, you know, I know the project, Wayne's not here, he could speak to more about sort of the timeline of this happening, but I know that Lamb has been moving quite quickly, as you've spoken about, through a lot of this, of their pre-paving work, and I know what Wayne did say, that once they go to the paving, it's about $1 million a month. That's significant, and at some point, without the funding from Pendite, which has about a 90-day reimbursement period, and Impact Harrisburg, the project will just stop through lack of ability to fund. So, that, that does become an issue. I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay.
And I think Erica, you know, as I'm trying to have her speak a bit more publicly on issues relating to the budget, she's going to lead this again, and I will contribute when necessary, so, good.
Good evening, city council, and thank you for, in advance, for reviewing Bill 1, Bill 2, and Resolution 16 of 2018. So, I'll just talk about Bill 1 right now of 2018. The Budget Office is requesting to increase the amount from, from $20,000 to $50,000, and that's due to just the fact that this ordinance was adopted, that ordinance was adopted in 2000, 1979, and there's been a lot of changes going on in the city. The budget back then was 13 million, and I just add, the inflation of the dollar has increased to 243%. So, comparable to, to what we're dealing with right now, about $65 million operational revenue, budget, we would like to request for that increase, and that's why it's $50,000 instead of $100,000, because in reality, there's a 5% increase of inflation from 13 million budget of 1979 to the budget now of 2018. But, long story short, we want to request this because it will help the Budget Office to facilitate the help to the other departments to, you know, speed up any needs that they have. Not only that, we, we know that any capital that is over $10,000 is our threshold to consider as a capital, and we want to be able to facilitate the ability to, to give them the opportunity to purchase things that are capital that may exceed the $10,000. And with $20,000, it has been very complicated, it's been very difficult to do that in the past. So far, throughout the time that I've been here, been, there's been about 15 reallocations that we brought forth to city council. So, my hope is that with this reallocation, or with this amendment to the limit, we'll be able to reduce the reallocation request that we bring down to council, and be able to handle everything that is minor in our level, and bring everything that's major to your level of understanding, to also have control over the budget. And we want to be very transparent over this, and that's why we're requesting this, so... Bruce may want to say anything else, so...
I know one of the concerns we talked about earlier was the idea of reducing the amount of budget reallocations that we do. I guess the concern I had was not necessarily to reduce them coming to council by way of increasing the threshold of which we could make those changes. So, I think that's one part of, I realize why you guys are doing it, I'm just saying, I think the, the consideration that we have to give in this is the degree do we want, not want to see that coming down. I think that's, that's part of it.
We definitely don't want to abrogate council's approval process, for sure. That's definitely what's on our mind. What we just want to be able to do is facilitate to the department...
I think this was, I think you need to look back in your records, because one of the concerns that we had on council was that they were spending money, just any way they wanted to, and no accountability. And I've been on council 12 years, and that's the problem, if we would have increased it over $20,000, we wanted to know what the spending, the administration was spending. If we give you the threshold of going from $20,000 to $50,000, and you don't have to come before council, we have no idea what is being spent, how it's being spent until the last minute. We want to have some kind of control over the spending. We don't want to get toward the point where we were before in depth.
Well, the, the thing is, if you actually look at it perspectively, the, the reality is that we actually do bring, if, if it's anything over $20,000, right, we, even $10,000, it may be a contract that you actually do have to review, right?
Not as much, not as much. At least it alerts us to what type of spending that you're doing. When we have it at $20,000, before we, we allowed this administration, not the prior administration, to have full access to over $20,000, and I think we...
They didn't have that. It was, it was always $20,000 since 1979.
We, nope.
We're not, we're not even request, we're, we're just asking for the limit to be increased. We're not requesting for anything of the wardage that says regarding personnel, it's only for services and supplies and capital, nothing else. We, we're not trying to change anything, it's just literally the amount. And like I said, just being in the Budget Office and doing the work myself, I understand that there is a lot of sometimes of holdbacks, and we're not, at least from what I've, from what I've seen for the past three years that I've been here, we have not misused the money. We have been very straightforward with city, with the citizens and city council of what we use the money for, and in matter of fact, that's why we're part of, you know, we go through the budget process, and we're not changing, we're not amending the budget in any way, we're not saying we're going to increase revenue or expenses.
We understand that, I understand that.
It's just literally that the budget...
I just think we need to have some kind of control over the spending, and I think when given you access to money over $20,000, would be probably detrimental to us at some point in time. Although you said you, it wouldn't, I, I don't agree with you, and that's just my opinion. You have six other opinions here.
Just a question, too, so this is going back to the original ordinance, number 45 of 1979. Have we, do we have a copy of that anywhere?
We can give you that, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious the full extent of what was covered in that ordinance.
Not much.
Not much.
So, they came down as a companion piece with the budget that year for reasons that aren't really explained.
It wasn't...
It was 1979.
Right, I remember that, but we also, there is another...
For the record, who in council was born?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, 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 no. There also, no, I'm not, now, come on, I'm not that old, don't get crazy.
No, it's only you and I that was born, that's the problem.
Oh, okay.
I started over.
I was only 20 something, anyway. But, Neil, I think we need to look back, because we did do a companion piece with this, with this $20,000, because there was an issue when, when, when the former mayor was here, because she wanted to spend over $20,000. We need to really look back on our records. Would you do that for me tomorrow? Pull that for me?
I remember frankly not, from, I remember this being an issue in public debate.
Yes.
Previously.
Yes.
What the actual, when it was actually passed, though, we went back and looked, it was actually passed twice in 1979. The first one was at the beginning of the year, and it was $25,000, and then at the end of the year, when they did the budget, they made it $20,000. And so, there's been, this has been debated, I think there's probably been other proposals that didn't pass, but the only history of a vote that I could find in our office is back to '79 that set this threshold, and it was set with a budget that had a $14,680,000 general fund budget at the time, and it didn't give a lot of explanation at the time. It just, so that was sort of their putting in a control. It was debated many times, I think, you know, back and forth with both Mayor Reed here and Mayor Thompson here, about how does council have a control over what's being moved?
But, my concern is, she's saying it's just for services, but every time we do a reallocation, it doesn't have anything about services or supplies that you're buying here.
But, this isn't just about reallocations, I guess that's the part that I want to...
Yeah, I want to make sure that I understand that as well, and, and the public as well, because you're, you're coming down here with how many reallocations per year.
Right, so, the, the, I mean, the real core issue is so that we can keep some operational flexibility, it's, you know, you know, budgets are projections of what may happen, and as we know during the, during the year, things may change. And we have these major line, you know, we have these major categories that, in the budget ordinance, the supply, services, and capital, and, you know, you, we have a, essentially what we have is we have a $1979 threshold, trying to account for, you know, 2018 expenses. You know, the dollar bought a lot more, 243% more in, in 1979 than it does now. So, we're just trying to say, you know, you know, this isn't about, obviously, personnel's, you know, that's, that's in the ordinance, you, we have to, any changes of personnel, we have to bring to you. This is more about, we have these, what I would say, artificial separations between services, supplies, and, and capital, but I'm not going to get into that right now, but so that we don't have to essentially wait a month if we have to address an issue and, and be out of compliance with essentially the law, we're just looking to essentially equate, you know, what was able to be purchased in $1979 with $2018, hence the $20,000 to $50,000 flexibility without having to go to council. Now, I mean, obviously, all our expenditures and all allocations are, you know, documented, and, you know, you can see those at any time if you want, you know, throughout the year, and are audited as well, you know, by, by, by our financial auditors. So, you know, we're not, obviously, we, we understand that we don't want to abrogate council's prerogative to control the budget and to, you know, allocate money, you know, as you see fit, but we're just trying to sort of, you know, when, when issues do come up, sort of not get sort of constrained by what I would say may be artificial sort of barriers to help us facilitate often emergency or unplanned issues that, that'll come up during the, during the year.
So, I guess the, I mean, a few perspectives just to add on that. One, you know, I think our action on this is not in deference to whether we view, you know, that you or anyone in the administration is misusing or misappropriating. I think that that is certainly not the kind of perspective, but when we think, we have to think kind of long-term, the challenge of where we've all been financially is there's been a lack of trust in both, and that's not, and I would say that's really not those sitting kind of in this room, it's a historical perspective kind of where we've been. And I think councils, one of council's primary obligations and our, and our role is to, you know, to approve a sound budget year over year. So, I think that the, it's just a matter of kind of giving some perspective on, on this, and I think the, the other side of the coin is I think the perceived challenges or delays and for free to be appropriated don't necessarily sit with council in terms of our inaction or inability to take action on items. I think that sometimes there's a procedural challenge kind of moving things through when it goes to legal and then back down to us and things like that. So, I think that, that, that a perceived delay from a council perspective, I don't know is entirely, you know, accurate, and for us not acting on, you know, things as they come as they come.
Oh, I only meant that it takes a month to get through a reallocation. That was only what I meant about that.
Right, and I, and I guess, I mean, that comes back to kind of, I guess, the budgeting philosophy in terms of how we, you know, we budget. I think there's still room for continued improvement on how we, we do budget and how we deal with, you know, budgetary transfers and allocations and things like that. So, I, I guess the, and I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues to ask questions. I think from my perspective, and I've been kind of chewing on this for a while, just trying to think, is this the direction that we want to take right now, you know, or no? And, and it's, it's mostly because I'm, I'm just trying to think through the impact beyond perhaps this administration. I think one of the challenges I've often approached with my term on, my time on council, my tenure on council, is how do we make sure that when we've been given an opportunity to restore the integrity of the process of what we take in the city, how can we ensure that that happens beyond me sitting in this chair, you sitting in that chair, any of us sitting in these chairs? And I think that's part of, when I think about it, when it comes to these types of decisions, to, to think through that long-term impact of that. So, I think that's part of it.
I might just say something really quick, too. Like you say, we go through the budget process, and you guys approve the budget, the bottom line, right? The other thing to it is, for example, there has been, 2017, we saw a lot of this, we had like seven, seven budget reallocations where literally it was like coming down to ask you to move money from supplies to services, services to supplies, right? And we've dealt with that in 2018. But now, if there is a project, if there is something that needs to, or an emergency that is minor, that doesn't necessarily, that is not huge, let's say, like Windows break or whatever, and it's $20,000 that needs to go in services, and they have enough funds and supplies to be able to transfer that, they'll be able to do that up to $20,000, right, for the year, and then we have to come down to council and, and, you know, do a reallocation, because at that point, the threshold has been, has been cut, and I keep track of that. I keep track of all the transfers we do, and I keep track of all the requests that are, that come through me. They're approved by me, by Bruce, and, you know, I don't usually allow people to do, you know, ad hoc transfers. So, like I said, we don't misuse the money, and we don't misuse the funds, but it does come to the point where there is those times when we have a project and we need something that, you know, sometimes it's a service that they have to install supplies, and we have to, just for the accounting purpose of it, we have to break it down for accounting and services and supplies.
How often is that?
That happens a lot. That happens a lot, especially for parks and...
Two, three times a week? What?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just talking like...
Okay, two, three times a month?
Uh, what do you mean? I'm sorry.
You said it happens a lot, so how often does it happen, then?
Well, last year it happened a lot, but, I mean, it, it does tend to happen at least, you know, twice a month, if anything. you know, twice a month if anything. But I'm able to handle it at my level at that point and try to, because we don't want to burden, you know, the departments and also your, you know, state council too much on that aspect. Like if it's, hey Eric, I need to move $5,000 from, you know, from services to supplies because we're not gonna, we're not gonna use this. So that's all I'm trying to say, you know?
Do we need to rethink how we allocate these line items anyway? I mean, I think that's part of the greater challenges we've talked about between services and supplies and the ambiguity associated with them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if you want to really want to, I mean, where I would say, to me that's, at this point, it's sort of a false difference, you know? If it were me, you know, I mentioned this before, I would say you have personnel operating and capital. And you sort of lose the designation between services and supplies as they become, you know, sort of the differentiation are minor, does it really matter? But, you know, and then you do, you do eliminate a lot of this issue.
What are other cities doing in respect to how they budget?
A lot of them don't have these differentiations like this. This is a city council--
I would kind of like to see a little bit more of how other cities are managing these types of issues within their budgets.
Yeah, they don't have these artificial delineations. This is a Harrisburg issue.
But they don't have the problems in Harrisburg.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I mean, they just don't, they just never set it up where that the budget ordinance that they adopt have these major categories being personnel, supplies, services or capital. It's sort of just a budget, you know? So, I mean, we can do a little, I can, we can do a little research--
Yeah, I would just be curious.
From your--
Yeah, not large scale, but kind of just a, because I think that having, again, moving forward, what's the best process to move forward that would, does not cede accountability or that checks and balances, but also allows for some more fluidity within the budgeting process. But I'll stop and get on, I'll shift questions.
Um, just to estimate, how much do you think it would actually reduce budget reallocations?
Uh, we're definitely, I'm definitely, I just want to, like I said, in the beginning of the year, we just want to do like four reallocations throughout the year.
That's too many.
One, one, one each quarter. But it will definitely, like I said, it's more for the administrative aspect of it. But, I mean, from seven of 2017 to four projected this year, that's three. So--
I mean--
If anything, if, you know, like I said, my goal is to keep it to four reallocations throughout the year. If anything, the reallocations will be very long every quarter for requests that we're going to be asking you in case they do exceed the 20,000. But just to give you a quick example, you know, probably 2015, we can say that Microsoft used to actually give us CDs, right, for their, for the office, right? Like office suite. Now it's all online, right? So we have these distinctions where it is, is it a supply or a service, right? So I've dealt with that this year, but it's little things that we, that come to my table and I'm like, okay, like, and it's not just for me, for the budget, but it's also accounting. And we want to try to be as accurate as possible.
Okay.
So this is more for the accounting aspect of it. Like I said, it's nothing to abrogate council's approval process or for you guys not to be aware of anything. At the end of the day, we're very open, you know, like we keep track of everything. If you need to know anything about any transfers, you're more than welcome to come to my office and, you know, find out exactly what's happening, so.
I would say, I think we'd be open to a regular report of all, of all transfers. I also think that it's important to note, we're not asking for authority to spend more money, there was some implication of that. This is not that. This is the ability to shift money from say a supply to a service. So no more, no additional money is being spent. Council's approving every dime that's being spent, just administratively, something comes up and they want to shift, shift or transfer. So it's different. If it's a transparency issue, I think maybe we could, we could deal with that with the sort of regular report from the finance office. So we'd be happy to do that.
I didn't, I mean, I don't know if you're referring to me about implying that, you know--
I just wanted the public to understand.
Oh, okay, about spending, because I don't know if you're implying to me, but--
Right.
I always wanted accountability from the last administration. And they were spending. There was things that they were spending, not that we didn't know. So this was our way to make sure that we knew what was being spent and we approved it. And I wouldn't do it without a stipulation or amendment to this, that we still have approval over anything that you spend over $20,000. Because I think council needs to notice what's happening in the administration, I mean, in your office, your finance office. And I know what you're saying, that, you know, it gives them the flexibility to be able to not always come down and do budget reallocations, but the budget reallocations that they are, that they said that they're going to stop, they're still doing.
Well, I guess maybe the other question I have too, we're talking about transfers between services and things. So I think there's a few distinctions maybe that, and this is what I want to, like this is what I'm trying to move over. Like, to your point, you're saying sometimes the challenge is whether it comes into the services category or the supplies category.
Right. Or, you know, and what you're planning during, you know, when you do this budget, right, in September and October, right, and November, and then, you know, you then actually get, sort of like try to, you know, explore that even further when you're actually purchasing it. And, you know, you're, you may realize, oh, maybe we should have gone in that direction. And that direction could be a difference between buying a product or buying, you know, buying the service that provides you the product, you know, or perhaps it costs more than you realize. And so now if it, for an accounting purpose, it's a capital expense rather than a supplies expense. And as Erica mentioned, it's really accounting, but unfortunately in our, what we have to do, we have to account for it within the rules and, you know, both the Gatsby and budgetarily and the ordinance as it's laid out. And so, you know, it, you just can't predict everything that happens, you know, sort of when you're planning it, that you, how you, how you think you're going to purchase something or which you assume it's going to be--
But aren't you familiar with that, after four years being in that position? Where are these things coming up like that?
You know, we don't--
This is not something that's new to me.
We don't, a lot of these things are sort of somewhat departmental sort of--
Decentralized.
Decentralized, yeah, I mean, we don't, they, they know what they get better than we do. We don't, it's not a top-down purchasing, you know, process here from every, every item. You know, only the bigger stuff do we sort of really have direct sort of input in. We don't have enough staff to purchase everything from a top-down.
Okay.
I'll shift yourself questions too, sorry.
Good, I'm sorry.
No, no more questions, just a comment. It seems like an easy way for people to not really pay that much attention to how they create their budget. Now, if it's not a big deal whether it's in supplies or services because I have 50, I can, you know, move things up to $50,000. If we're trying to tighten the way people are doing their budget, it seems like now you're giving them more leeway to not have to come down and say, oh, sorry, this was a supply, not a service, or we need to move this. It just gives them a larger amount to move, move around. And I think, I want to say during last, last, the last budget reallocation at the end of last year, I think we had something like this with Public Works where they had moved the money before they came to us, but they did it in small increments, so we never saw it. And we kind of had the question of how did you move that money without us knowing it? So was it being increased, will we see that more often now?
No, no.
Logically we would, right?
From 20--
Yes.
I don't remember the whole detail for last year, but I do remember where you're mentioning. It was a, I think it was the fencing that we needed to buy.
And everything to do around demolition and fencing.
Right. So we needed to get that done. My, I see my job is to help the departments get their job done, right? So what I did, I was like, okay, we don't have money anywhere else but in that category of supplies, I think it was, right? So I was like, okay, the only thing we can do is just move the money within that and then, you know, eventually, because that had to be done like either that day or that week. So it's going to help us in that aspect, like when there is emergencies, small emergencies like that, it was probably like $7,000 that we moved. But it was small emergencies like that that need to, that need to happen. And that, you know, it's, the budget is the living document, the way I look at it. It moves around all the time. But we tried to stay true to what was adopted, like where the services was and the supplies. Sometimes there is, you know, like we, I oversee all the departments, but I'm not telling them exactly, hey, you need to buy this, you need to buy that, to tell them, hey, this is a supply, this is a service. They give me the details in September and I review through all of them. And some of you have seen the details that they provide us and we've become more detailed into that, so that we're more transparent in understanding of what we want to actually purchase. But there is chances where maybe, you know, they want to buy laptops and maybe they put it under, you know, maybe it's not anymore. I'm just giving you a quick example. Maybe it's not 5,000 anymore, but it's $6,000. You know, they put that under supplies, but now they wanted to buy five of them or three of them. Now we're looking at, to come to a reallocation to state council and wait, not that you're taking long on approving anything, but it's just that extra month or a month and a half that we have to wait. So we want to try to avoid those small things from occurring because it's just literally accounting. We're not increasing the budget, we're not reducing the budget, we're not doing anything, we're just literally just increasing that limit of transfers. And from my understanding, when there was the amendment to that ordinance where the specific point or the driver was to actually, there was a misuse, right? And I think that we're taking money from personnel. That's why there was that strict line of saying, we don't want you to move money from personnel, like that's what the actual ordinance now says. I don't know what the other one said in like 1979 or even a little bit before that, but the current one says you can move money from personnel to services and supplies, which I completely agree with that, like that's unacceptable to do that.
But I think what we then, I mean, to your point, and I think that, and I think we need to work on this then a little bit more in terms of this resolution because I think that this does not speak to, I think, some of those scenarios. I think it's more of a broad, broad allowance, basically, like if, you know, like in terms of saying, maybe we need to, like if we're talking about budgetary transfers, maybe we need to qualify what would be acceptable as what's not acceptable.
Well, non-personnel. We're not, we're not, we're not changing the language in the--
I know, but I'm saying this doesn't even say like non-personnel.
Right. We're not changing the language to the current ordinance, we just want to change literally the amount.
It must be the, I don't think we have the complete--
Actually, this, you read this whole, this first sentence in 307.4A, third line where it says, prior to the authorization of individual budgetary transfer exceeding, and that's the number, then it goes to, or any budgetary transfer from or within any personnel service allocation, that's when they come down for, through a county approval, city council. So they can't move any money in personnel line item, they can't move it over to something else out of personnel or into personnel without city council--
Right.
And that doesn't change with this number. And that's how the existing ordinance is, and that's what stops them right now from anybody making that personnel change in terms of the budget. And that was added and beefed up after 1979 when it went in place.
Do we have a copy of that ordinance?
That's literally the language in the--
Yeah, you can look it up on ECO.
Yeah.
The only thing we want to change is literally just the amount. We're not saying we want to move money from personnel to, we're, I completely agree that we have to come down to council for any request of any changes that we either move money into personnel or move out. I completely agree with that. It's just now the area where it's supply, services and capital, where we've had issues the past, like I said, three years that I've been here and I've seen that. So like I said, it's going to make my job easier, it's going to make the other departments' jobs easier. And I definitely want to abide by the Gatsby rules and make sure that everything is accounted for in its proper place, whether it's a service, supply or capital, so.
Dave?
Has the controller's office come out with an official statement? They're fine with it.
They're fine with that, yeah.
And have you discussed it with our Act 47 coordinators, huh?
I don't think they totally can.
I can ask, I don't really take care of-- Okay. That was it for me, thank you.
Who else?
Um, I mean, I just, I just see what you guys are trying to say, I just see what you guys are trying to do. I think the biggest thing with me, I mean, I've never been a fan of our purchasing structure anyway. I'm always hopeful about that as far as, I think it's, and this is like it's long-term, I think it's just too decentralized. I think there's, not knowing, this is me speaking, you know, aspirationally, I think there's a potential for savings in the way that we doing, that we do, our purchasing as far as different supplies and things that we do. But like, I don't know, I feel like, just from where I'm at, just understanding more, I don't mind, I personally don't mind the reallocation. I don't, I don't mind how many comes down. I think, I think it opens up time for actually instant conversation of what's going on. I understand like the labor intensity and the possibility of delaying certain purchases from happening. But I think, I don't, I don't know, I'm conflicted. That's what I'm just going to be like, I'm conflicted. I know one of the things that I have been trying to get in the ass is, I know it's kind of tied into the whole MBE portion of it, but I was, I'm interested in just seeing, you know, our purchasing by department, about how much in by department, by category or that we truly spend in total procurement. And I have yet to see that. But I think it's because of time, looking at what MBE, but I, even if I don't have the MBE portion of it, I think it's an interesting point to kind of understand even from, you know, being on council. We all, we know we approve a budget, you know, but when it comes down to actual procurement and spending and by department, by, you know, these different categories that we defined before, I think it's helpful and kind of to help us better understand our procurement process. So we don't have any questions, that's what I'm saying. He's conflicted.
Want to get any more?
No, I think I've said enough.
Let's--
No, I mean, a lot has already been said. Yeah, no, I mean, I understand the position that the finance department is trying to Can we actually get a, like, so can we actually get how many allocations were in that, I guess, $20,000 to $50,000 range, so we would know, rather than, I want to see it before I'm willing to approve. So we actually know how many reallocations that's actually going to, to change, because we do see some reallocations above that $50,000 number that are going to have to come down anyway. So how many, how many and what were they? If you guys can provide us over the last few years, just so we can get a sense, because I don't want it to be, you know, that we're, it's not like, I don't want it to be that city council's preventing you from doing your business, but if you can show me what it's historically been, then it gives me a better sense of what we're actually looking at doing. Because some of the reallocation that we just came down, they are, are in that range. But I want to know what it's been like over the past--
And just a quick remark--
Couple of sessions.
In regards to this reallocation, this will not apply to that. Because this is actually increased, we are amending the budget, so we have to come down. This does not apply to that changing.
So this would come down regardless?
This would come down regardless. It's literally budget transfers. It does not apply to what you actually see in front of you today, like the budget reallocation. This does not apply to that.
Because there's additional revenue coming in or something.
Right. This is amending, this is literally amending the budget compared to a budget transfer, it's different. You're moving--
You're just moving money, right.
From services and within the same budget unit if it was--
Okay.
Right. So it's--
That was my next question.
Yeah, right. You go budget--
Yeah. That was my next question was, are we just staying within a specific budget unit or if we're looking, okay.
So that also now is tremendously--
And it's a cumulative yearly threshold. I think you should talk about that a little bit--
Right, so--
We understand it. We understand it.
Yeah, we understand what, yeah.
Anything, once you hit the cumulative point of $20,000, if you transfer $5,000.
There's a very narrow window of what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
So, just for example, 2017, the reason you saw a lot of reallocations was because we had the PO rollovers immediately, on my level, when I see the PO rollovers, even though we may not consider like a complete reallocation, where we're, I mean, we're mending the budget, right? But to me, that's already doing a transfer, so I already exceeded the $20,000.
You're talking about, like, the encumbrances and the...
Rollovers. To me, I already see that as a, we already, you know, we already exceeded the $20,000 threshold, hence why we had to come back.
Right.
A lot of times.
That's understandable.
So, like I said, it's more for, this is literally accounting, and it's just going to facilitate the ease of not having to come down as often for little things that, you know, at the end of the year, you're like, why are you coming down here for this?
Right.
When, what really matters is the actual amendments.
Right.
That we're making to the budget.
So, for me, and I don't know how the members of council feel, if you can get us back, how many budget transfers would fall in that $20,000 to $50,000 range, where we would have had to see a reallocation come down versus it would have just been through the normal course of business? And since it is, since now we're talking about it a little more, it's very, it's, this is very specific, this is like taking a scalpel to something. We're saying, we're going to stay, stay within a certain budget unit, you can, you're going to increase the amount that you can transfer between that budget unit only, and taking it from $20,000 up to $50,000. Any additional money coming in would be an amendment to the budget, which would still have to come down anyway.
Which is the language already in the ordinance.
It's already in the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's how we look at it.
So, for me, to feel a little bit more comfortable, if you can get us that documentation over the past, maybe two legislative, two or three legislative sessions, and see how many reallocations would have fell in that, so that, I know for me, that'll give me a little bit more comfort of knowing that we're not, that these are the type of transfers that would now become just the normal course of business versus would have been a reallocation. Thank you.
I think the balance may be, when you're just looking at it, it's just because of the new process of far, as far as how we handle rollover encumbrances, is maybe looking at, I mean, you can still keep it at the $20,000 for any item, but maybe increasing that initial threshold, the second part of the ordinance. I think the threshold, that's the part where it gets to, like, you know, anything past $20,000 now, if it's a thousand, as it come down.
Even if it's a dollar.
If it's a dollar.
It's a penny.
So, maybe, so maybe after looking at those statistics, is this maybe just looking at that threshold?
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, too. Like, and I realize that tomorrow's a voting session, if you guys are okay, let's not vote on this tomorrow, so we have time to, like, flesh out a little bit. But I was thinking kind of along the same line.
Have you given the threshold?
Yeah.
Did you answer any?
No, that was, that was.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, I think I'm also kind of conflicted on the issue. Some of it is because I've heard different interpretations of this item, like, some people say it's per category, some people say it's per line, so it would be nice to have some kind of definitive answer, whether it's per line or per category, and that would make things simpler for me.
So, just to answer that really quick.
You're not, you're not going to be, I mean...
No, the way that we interpreted in the Budget Office and the Controller's Office, right? So, the way we see this ordinance, the $20,000, we say, okay, so we have a $20,000 limit to move within each category, right? So, if it's 20, we can only move $20,000 from services to supplies, $20,000 from supplies to capital, right, or vice versa, however you want to look at it. And that's it. And then apart from that, like I said, any increase to the budget, we have to come down to council. Any movement of personnel, we automatically have to come to council. We're not changing that.
But that's kind of your interpretation as you're processing these, right?
Yeah, that's how it's read, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the budget is past a major line item category.
Right.
That's what the budget ordinance has passed at.
Okay, so could someone get me that? Like, because I think over the years, I've received different guidance on this, and I would like to be clear on what it is, you know, especially now that we're asking for the amount. The second thing, you know, whenever there are emergencies, I don't understand why we just can't introduce the budget reallocation, because a lot of times, once a bill is urgent, we just simply suspend the rules and discuss it, and we vote on it.
And that is always a possibility.
So, why, yeah, I mean, so the month delay that we're talking about is really more administrative kind of thing, so I don't see that as adding any extra kind of heft to the argument for why we need fewer or more budget reallocations.
I mean, I'm not sure that that's, I mean, you know, you may get pushback if you ask to do that. I mean, I know that, you know, you're sort of asking for something, rather than through the normal process, you're asking for suspending the rules and...
We have never been, I don't think we've ever had a, because there are times that we, I mean, when we had the huge snowstorm, 30 inches of snow, we had, we had no problem. You know, I mean, there are times that emergencies come up, we've never, I don't think, and I think honestly, if council, if there's an emergency situation and council doesn't do that, I think we'd have a lot of work responding to our residents as to why we didn't deal with some emergency thing that came up.
We're pretty efficient trying to do an emergency reallocation now with the law bureau, because he didn't have the right staff, I mean, he didn't have an adequate staff. And I'm sorry, Neil, but, you know, that's how it's been, you know, it's because we didn't get the information done. And, you know, now that he's fully staffed, we should be...
Rockin' and rollin', right?
Right.
Rockin' and rollin'.
No, rock and roll, okay.
Yeah, and then just kind of going to the actual substance of the amount, you know, to me, the budget that we set at the beginning of the, well, I guess I have two other points. I actually don't mind the budget reallocation meetings, because those are the times when we get on the record data about what's going on in the city. And so, some, so I don't mind that, you know, I understand administrative is a problem for you, but it's one of the few times that we get actual on-the-record data. But to me, a budget is the priorities for how a city is going to spend its money and what services and things we want to provide that year to our residents. And, you know, as I'm thinking about it, $50,000, you know, to resurface a street about a block and length costs about $5,000, right? So, that, yeah. So, if you have, like, yeah.
I don't know where we can hire that person.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was surprised how, yeah. So, you have about, so, if you were to, huh? Yeah, no, apparently that's what it costs. So, so you're just looking at the block, so reallocating $50,000 if you were to search services versus materials, right? That theoretically is a change in between prioritizing, you know, maybe 10 blocks worth of street resurfacing versus something else that's $50,000. So, I don't know, so it's just, I think it's something I need to sit with, because there are ways in which right priorities kind of change as you're switching between the two categories, right, what you're providing to, to the residents, so. Those are just my comments, they're just kind of the, what I'm processing as I look at the, the bill.
Shemane, could you, I'm sorry, could you clarify what it is that you want administration to get you? And your very first comment was, can you get me that?
Oh, yeah, like, what the actual interpretation is about, whether it's per line item or per category.
Major category per budget. That's, that's how the ordinance is written. But, I mean, I guess that's up to the law bureau to get to you.
Well, as I say, we would be happy to have you amend this to include a sort of regular report to council and to the public, we could do that, that's possible, just as a consideration. As we move forward, so like, every, everything, anything that we would do, we mean this to be transparent and clear to the public and available for your questions and for you to, to see. That's, this is, from the perspective of the Finance Bureau, this is administratively making their jobs a little bit easier and helping them account for money properly. So, we can, we'll continue the conversation, but just know that there, we're happy to work with you on a variety of ways of, of making the reporting to council and the public still exist, even while we maybe make the threshold higher.
And like I said, I think for me, part of the consideration is not just the here and now, but what happens when none of us are sitting in this room in years to come, and I think that's part of what I want to make sure.
So theoretically, you could require a quarterly report from the administration for all transfers between 20 and 50, or something like that.
I don't want to report my CS back in depth again.
Right. So, one thing that kind of happens, and I think, I think we have tend to move in that direction, but I think there's, I think that's an interesting thing to kind of look back and kind of see of all the different reports that council should be receiving, that we're not receiving. A lot of times, we, I think in theory, I think reports are nice, but I think there's a lot of reports, like, we don't receive reports on, like, police is supposed to submit reports, they haven't submitted reports since we asked for that quarterly thing, and that's, everyone was inside the room for that conversation. So, I think it's nice in theory, but I think a lot of times, when it comes to actually executing those quarterly reports, sometimes if it's not a hot topic or it's going on, you know, it falls through the cracks, I don't want that to happen as well.
Well, we know we'll be moving forward with, with regular budget reallocations regardless, so it's a topic that I think can continue to be in everyone's presence of mind, so if we, if we move to more of a quarterly budget reallocation method, we could attach a report to it, and we could establish a process that would stay in place after all of us are gone.
That's just something I can start to, so just to kind of wrap it up, this conversation, there's a few things I think that we're going to get, you're going to send kind of an analysis of the, what we're need different, you know, and what else was that, what Shemane requested with?
I think it's more of a definition of which of the parts we're talking about.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a straight-up request.
So, good, too. And then, I do just want to tinker with this a little bit, too, if possible, so I might be making my way over and see if we can get a meeting to talk about language, if that's all right. So, all right, so we will not leave this on to a vote for tomorrow, but we will revisit this again.
Yeah, it's not going to be an agenda.
No. So, moving on, we may as well talk about Bill 2 of 2018 and Resolution 32 at the same time.
Yeah, they're rather related, obviously.
Yeah, they're companion pieces. Sharon, do you want to go ahead and read them both into record?
Bill 2-2018 is an ordinance approving the acceptance of loan funding by the City of Harrisburg from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Infrastructure Bank in the amount of $2 million for the purpose of restoring, repairing, and improving streets within the city situated in South Harrisburg, including accessibility upgrades relating to Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. Resolution 32-2016 is a resolution of the City of Harrisburg to enter into and execute a loan agreement and related documents for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Infrastructure Bank in the amount of $2 million for the purpose of restoring, repairing, and improving streets within the city situated in South Harrisburg, including accessibility upgrades relating to Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, and authorizing the mayor, comptroller, engineer, and solicitor to execute such documents as are necessary to accept the award and otherwise finalize the loan on behalf of the city.
Okay. And Bruce, you still take?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Wayne would have been here, he's being fitted for custom Disney ears, probably as we, as we speak, so is unable to attend. So, I can speak to the generalities of the project, obviously more specifics, you're going to have to wait for him to come back. However, this is no different than the, it's called the South Harrisburg Paving Project that I believe he spoke to you about at the end of last year during budget season. We had mentioned that we had applied to the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank for a loan, but because of the delay in the budget and everything that was going on, we had not received it, and we were, we didn't even know if it was going to be approved. In mid-January, it did come through that that loan request was approved. So, basically, you know, what's here is, we have to ask council to take the loan from the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank as, per, you know, code. The money is at a pretty good interest rate, you know, 2.135% for 10-year period. The loan is going to be secured and repaid by state liquid fuels money, so rather than sort of...
What kind of money?
State liquid fuels money.
Oh, okay.
All right, so rather than essentially incrementally paving stuff, you know, we're basically doing it all at one time and then paying it back, you know, for a period of years, which is the most ideal way of doing it.
Is there a benefit to paying back early on this, you know, in terms of?
I mean, I guess maybe, I don't know.
Because how much, I mean, how, I guess...
2.2% is pretty good.
Right, it's a pretty good loan term, but I was just thinking, as we approve this, and we're thinking about how we pay it back, have you guys thought about the payback term and timeline and how you would do that, like, in terms of incrementally, quarterly, monthly?
I believe it's, you just have to do it, no, I had not, that's not been broached, I don't, I'd have to, rebudgeted to, basically, to pay it back, and, you know, in the line item, it's one lump sum, $200,000 and change.
Right.
I, that's a good question, because if you pay it more often, in theory, the interest would be paying less.
Right, your opinion.
I will ask the PIB about how they calculate their interest. It may not be done in the same way that maybe a traditional financing entity would do that. That's my instinct, but I will, I will ask.
Because I, I mean, again, it's a good loan from a rate standpoint, but I'm just thinking, if we're paying it back from the, from that fund, then I'm just wondering, we probably could be more aggressive in how we pay it back.
Yeah, we, right, that's right.
If that saves us money in the end.
And some, it will save us on interest costs, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, whether we want to pay it back in five years versus 10 years, I mean, that's taking, you know, money that we could otherwise use for something else, and I'm not sure if we want to do that, because the cost of the capital is so low, but for the, from the interest side, that is something that I can acquire, it's a good question, actually. They didn't ask us, you know, when we have the loan documents, like, when we do financing for other pieces of equipment or stuff, you know, they talk about the payment frequency, that was, that was not part of the loan documents on this particular loan.
And is this, in terms of, is there like a date of which we have to respond back in terms of accept the...
Yeah, like soon, I mean, the part of the issue is that we need to get the disbursement within this calendar year, that's part of the grant requirement, the loan requirement, and, you know, so this has to go out to bid, and then the project has to be ready to start so that we can then draw on those funds.
We have to draw it down within one year of the date of the award in January.
So, the award date is January, so the clock is ticking already?
Yes.
Okay.
What's in the state liquid fund? What's the balance in there now? Do you know?
Well, it's pretty high, because we just, we always get the annual award in March.
Sure.
And this year's annual award was about $1.375 million, so we have, I believe it's about 2.3 and change, I believe, is the, that changes every, every, you know, two weeks, that's about the amount. Obviously, that goes down significantly during the summer, as we use up the money, that's what it's meant for, which is roads. And in case you didn't know, the paving, I know, hopefully you received the PowerPoint slide, Wayne had forged that to me last week, you know, the roads that this project is made up, is going to be Brookward from 17th to City Line, 13th between Berry Hill and Paxton, Sycamore between 13th and Cameron, and Berry Hill between Cameron and 13th.
Oh, you got to say that one more time. Was there, I was going to ask that question.
So, the, so, the, it's already been packaged in, you know, in this bid spec.
Before you go, that's on the presentation.
It is on the presentation, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's on the presentation, that's the call.
Yeah.
Well, I can say it again, if you want.
Is it like towards the end of it? I'm in the photo rea...
I mean, to be honest, I just looked at the map and chatted down the road.
Yeah, it's outlined with, like, yellow and red.
Ah, I get it.
Bruce, or maybe it's not even, you can answer it, but Neil, we were talking about, and just for the public and for those watching at home, explain why we are doing this as a bill and then also a resolution, just so people can understand.
So, the bill is required under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, because we have to show that we're not incurring debt over our borrowing limit, and we got to get a certificate from DCD according to their attorney. That's what their determination was, even though it was liquid fuels. The resolution is required by the Infrastructure Bank as showing that the governing body authorized to borrow and accepting of it. So, there are two, happen to be just two different agencies that require two different things. When we did the last one of these, probably 12 years ago, they did the, I think the Leguda one first, passed it, which then it triggered the application, and then had the resolution accepting it after the fact. Here, I just said, send over the application without the Leguda, and then DCD said, we need this bill in place, so.
Let me go down for questions, I'll start the session. Shemane?
I don't have any.
Wes?
No, no questions, I mean, this, everything, I've talked with Wayne about this on several occasions, so for me, I'm good.
Okay. One.
Okay.
Who else? Did you see, were you able to see on the map?
Yeah, I'm looking at the streets, so primarily Brooklyn.
Wait, I do have one. So, we're paying over $200,000 a year back?
Yeah, and change, it's a 10-year loan.
Okay.
And it's $2 million.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dave?
Okay.
No questions.
So, if you could, do you think you can answer for me on the question about the kind of the...
I will reach out tomorrow to the, and see how fast I can get the information back.
I mean, it's not a deal breaker, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so actually, no, it's a really, it's a really good point, though, yeah, they did not talk about payment frequency, so I was, they may, they may not have an option, I don't know.
So, on the, on Bill 2, there's a payment interval, is that what we're talking about? So, the payment interval is, the borrower shall repay the principal and interest of So the payment interval is the borrower shall repay the principal and interest of the loan in 10 consecutive annual payments due and payable beginning on or before the first of the month following the first annual anniversary of the loan dispersment.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I don't know if they will allow you to do it more than once a year.
Right, that's a, but if there's an aggressive-
Terms are negotiable?
Right.
Right.
Terms are negotiable?
Well, no, but I just wonder if there is, is there interest saving? Are they attaching the interest on over, after your dispersment, or is that the question? I'm just, and I'm truly more out of curiosity than anything else. It's not a deal breaker, obviously. It's just-
So the first payment will be due when?
When, within one year of the-
Within the one year, so you're going to be paying it?
We would probably actually pay it early because we budgeted already this year for it.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. Yeah, it was in the budget, so we need to make, okay, we need to make that payment.
Yeah. And then if you look, I'm looking back through it again on regards in prepayment terms. I think that's what we're-
Oh, yeah, I haven't, I didn't even see that.
Yeah, so prepayment terms are the borrower may repay the loan in whole at any time or in part from time to time without penalty or premium, but accrued interest to the date of such repayment on the amount paid.
Okay, so maybe there's some flexibility. I will find out how many, maybe I don't, they're like, we don't want you to spend it, you know, pay, you know, 12 times a year. They may say, you know, we don't want-
It really comes down to how flexible we want to be in our Liquid, with our Liquid Fuels money. If we want to be able to do more projects and not have to pay it back as quickly with the money that we do have in that fund, then we, we're getting 2.1% in interest payments, which is really very, really low-interest loans. So I think that becomes a policy issue or how we, how the administration and council wants to handle it. But I don't think that 2% loan to get $2 million, yeah, it's a pretty good, pretty good deal to do all the work that we're looking to do.
Yeah. Well, and I just realized too, Neil, we just talked about this too. So we can't actually vote on Bill Two tomorrow. We have to make sure we've advertised.
No, it can't be voted on before the April 10th meeting to advertise it. You just pick the date, we have to advertise that date two weeks and sometimes three weeks in a row.
So if we, if you could find out tomorrow if we want to shoot to vote on this?
Either way, we could do it on the 10th.
On the 10th.
I know Wayne would like to do it as soon as possible.
Okay, so I'm fine, as long as, if we can do that, let's move this for a vote on.
So you're going to move both of them at the same time, or you're going to move one and then wait for the other?
We might as well vote at the same time, right?
So both of them on the 10th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Neil, if you, well, you're confident the 10th will work?
Yes.
Okay.
And we got the approval from DCD, right?
Correct, so we get, we get that after the bill passes.
Okay, so they'll send it.
We have to show that when we actually draw down the money.
Okay, and then make sure that council sees, has a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and now, last on the list, Resolution Sixteen of 2018. Oh, this is short. A resolution approving the second proposed 2018 budget reallocation. I realize that part of this is also dealing with the $2 million coming in from the loan.
So, yes. Resolution Sixteen to 2018, four appendices. Appendix A is for the State Liquid, for the loan that we're planning to get for $2 million.
The what?
It's for the loan, for the $2 million loan. So what we're doing here is the accounting aspect of it, where we're increasing Public Works Projects Revenue Line 389007 Loan Proceeds by $2 million, and then increasing expenditures in that budget unit by an account number 458060 Streets and Roads by $2 million. So that's the request.
Yeah, and that's a, that's just accounting.
That's the accounting of it, correct.
Okay, and then Appendix B?
An Appendix B has two sections to it. So Section A is relating to Neighborhood, to Neighborhood Services Fund, where we want to increase miscellaneous account 385090 for the revenue of $8,500, and increase the Neighborhood Services Park Maintenance Account Number 430040 with tonal by $8,500. And this is because PPNL has been cutting some trees, and they're just giving us money back to replant them.
How do they determine an amount?
I don't know, but we, they're actually giving us a little bit more, from my understanding, because the trees, like, they're not that expensive.
I think they had an amount per tree. Yeah, an amount per tree.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And we're planning, I think, it's like fewer than they took down because there are some people that don't want, yeah, there's some residents that don't want trees, so.
Who are these people?
I, hey, not that many, but they're-
Just kidding. Okay.
So Section, so the following section is Section B. There's two parts to that, where we are discussing the PA Gaming Control Board Grant, which is Budget Unit 53505309. We want to increase estimated cash carryover by $33,253.95. And that's, as well as increasing expenditures by eight, account 485000, refund prior year revenue by $32,077.24.
And on this note, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce our new grants manager.
Hello.
Rebecca Volmer. She started about a month ago.
Yep, this is my first day of Week Five.
Yes.
Welcome.
And, and so she has been, you know, getting her, drinking from fire hose to proverbially speaking with all the grant stuff. And so I'd like, you know, she, you know, she want to ask questions about sort of the, any grant issue here. I wanted to make sure that you, you know, were able to meet her and then ask questions further. This is a reimbursement of unused grant expenditures, which happened last year in Year One, and this is Year Two as well.
Is there any reason why this wasn't in the encumbrances then? If this was a carryover?
We didn't know the exact amount.
Gotcha.
Okay. Yeah, the, we had, we don't, we had to estimate that number at the end of the last year's budget because you don't really know what you're spending and what you're not spending. So the full accounting for what was spent to close out of 2017 wasn't done until January, February. And then, so, you know, this is the remaining dollar amounts that we have to return as it was a advanced grant.
And B Two?
And B Two, we are increasing general revenue in the General Fund, which is Budget Unit 0100100, Account 398053 Police Protection Fund, by $1,176.71. And we're increasing expenditures in the PA Gaming Control Board Grant in account number 481001 General Fund Transfer of $1,176.71. That specific line item is relating to payroll correction that we're doing, that actually happened.
In 2016?
Correct.
And so you're taking that from the Police Protection Fund?
But it's for the, it's for that same grant, so we're, we actually caught that, that error, and we're correcting it. And since this is the last year when we're returning the funds, so that's why we're pretty much refunding the General Fund, because it was 35% of the dog law officer's salary. And like, the pay periods are there from October the 3rd through the 16th, and then November the 14th through the 27th of 2016. And like I said, this is the accounting aspect of it, where we're increasing the revenue in the General Fund. We're not spending the money because that money was already spent, right? We have to move the money from the PA Gaming Control Board Grant to the General Fund.
Does anyone have questions on Appendix B?
No.
I'd like to return money.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I'd like to return money.
I just don't like to return money, but I guess we don't have a-
We need to find something. We could have used that money, $32,000, so we need to do better about these grants.
Do you have a question?
Okay, with the Appendix C?
So Appendix C, this is another one where we're increasing revenue expenditures, and this is for the Neighborhood Services Fund, for account number 367007 Garbage and Recreation Collections, and expenditure line item 429090 Miscellaneous Contract Services by $33,000. And what this is for is the Farm Complex. They have special events going on on a annual basis. And we actually contract Graybill to go pick up their garbage because we, I don't know the whole logistics of it, but last year we didn't do this. But this year, because we have control over all the commercial accounts, I don't think we're able to take all the garbage, you know, during the farm show and all the other events that they have there. So we actually hire Graybill. They pick up the garbage, and then they bill us for the pickup. And we bill the Farm Complex, or Farm, Farm, uh-
Farm Show.
Farm Show Complex, sorry. We bill them for the same amount that, you know, we were charged by Graybill. So this is what we're doing in the beginning of the year. There were some expenses that happened. So now we just want to true it up. And there's going to be another event going on in August. So this is also going to cover that.
So is this something, I mean, that we should make as part of the regular budgeting process kind of going forward?
Going forward, yes. And like I said, this is something that we just encountered this year because we didn't have the contract with them last year.
We don't have the capability to pick up the trash?
No, these are really big, large roll-offs that we don't have the equipment for. Now, that is something that we could, we could invest in. It's just sort of, right now, the strategy is we have done a really good job of making sure that all private hauling in the city is highly regulated. Only a handful of waivers are given out, and the farm show was a major trash producer. And so this is a positive thing. They've agreed to let us make sure that all of the trash is going to the incinerator. That's good because that ensures that there's no leakage, you know, not saying it could have. Well, it has happened in the past where haulers might take the trash somewhere else because it's a lot less expensive. And so as a sort of stopgap measure, we're basically contracting with somebody else and then passing the costs on to the farm show. But they have been very positive because they have cooperated with the, with the city in making sure that we, we don't have a private hauler when we, when we don't, don't need one.
Is this, is this kind of a direct, like a revenue neutral kind of scenario?
Revenue neutral.
Exactly.
And theoretically, again, we could invest in equipment. We've, the few waivers that we have issued have had to do with roll-offs and things that the city doesn't have the equipment to handle. So that's, I think, a little further down the line, but something that we might do eventually. But the farm show, it's, it's an odd thing because it's also, it's just a few certain, you know, it's just certain events at odd times of the year, but it produces a lot of trash at those handfuls of events.
Any questions on Appendix C, colleagues?
Just one. In terms of, I guess, in terms of contractors or vendors that provide the service, is it, is this the only one in the area that provides such services?
Thank you.
Have you bid it out?
Does it bid out, or is it just, this is, this is the person we use, or are you not the-
You have to speak to Public Works. I don't have that answer.
It was not bid out that I know of.
Okay.
But it's a wash, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I'm not concerned, I'm not concerned about the revenue of it. It's, I'll reach out to Public Works because if we're, if we're just directing, you know, certain contracted services to certain vendors and we don't bid it out, we may want to take a look. Unless it's a, like I said, unless it's a specialty thing, we don't have anyone else that can handle roll-offs, then I understand. But I'll ask Public Works. Thanks.
Appendix C?
Appendix C, it's a position control, where we are transferring now from the direct, the DVHD's Director, Budget Unit 01030134, from salaries and wages and social security, $41,057.34, into the Business Development Budget Unit 01030139, for salaries and social security. And I'll have the mayor explain.
Yeah, I'll present, and this is, this is an example, one of those personnel moves that we do want to bring to council, and we want your approval for. We, we lost Devin Drebeck, who was our Business Development Director for the city. She's gone on to work for the Visitors Bureau. And so we did some internal assessing of what we should do with that loss. And we have determined that we'd like to basically promote from within two individuals who have been working very well for the city. One is Megan, who's here, and the other is Charlie. So as you may know, that Devin sort of had this, she wore a couple different hats. She was both fundraising for our events, and she was the sort of Business Development, Small Business Liaison in the community. We are proposing basically splitting those duties between Charlie and Megan. Megan's going to be focused on the events, and her official title would change to Director of Special Events. And Charlie would take on the Business Development portion, and, and he would become the Director of Business Development. They would each get a raise, and there is still a net gain financially for the city because Devin's salary was, was higher, so. And rather than have three individuals, like we had in the past with Devin, Megan, and Charlie, we're going to have those two take the lead and then hire a, basically an assistant to help, to help work with, with Megan in running the events. And that'll be at a lower, lower salary than Megan herself were working. So that's, that's how we're proposing, dealing with the loss of, of one of our personnel. And you may ask, isn't some of this funded by the Visitors Bureau? And the answer is yes. Megan's salary is funded in part by a grant from the Visitors Bureau, and that would continue to happen. It, she would just have her title slightly changed from whatever it was, Marketing Events Manager to Special Events Director.
Well, what were their original salaries?
Okay, so their original salaries, Megan's original salary was 52.5, and Charlie's original salary was 50, and Devin's original salary was 60. This is in the budget that you passed at the beginning of the year. So we're proposing taking Charlie to 56, Megan to 55, and hiring this assistant position at a range in the low 40s as just basically an administrative assistant, which again is a net positive to the city. It's actually, so it doesn't have any negative financial impact. And then Megan's grant would just follow her in the name change of her position. And Charlie would become your point person for Business Development and really our, our main person in the community for dealing with all sorts of small business issues, but including the MBE component. And they're both here, so if you would like to speak to either of them, I'm sure they'd be willing to, to talk. But we feel that we're very fortunate to have both of them. They've proven themselves at the city. They're doing a very good job, and so it's basically promoting the two of them and hiring a lower-level administrative assistant. Ken, you could, if you'd like to add to that, to your department?
I just want to say that both Charlie and Devin, I mean, Megan, you've been working very well so far. As part of our team, and now that Devin is gone, that really does open up that opportunity for Megan to take that role. And if you remember, Devin's role was supposed to be Business Development. But we knew that she had also the skills and talents to do fundraising, and she knew a lot about the community, and she's trained Megan really well to help take that. Now Charlie, who's been a learning administrator, and he's been great at that and great helping me out with doing Small Business Development as well. So I think he's very capable of taking on that role as Business Development President. And, and continuing to do the work.
They'll both be stepping into the spotlight more, so to speak.
Questions for my colleagues?
Any particular order?
We can go down the end. Asha, then?
Not right now.
Dave?
None for me, thanks.
Quinellus?
So I know you just touched on the role of the business developer and I guess point person for like MBE. How do you foresee, kind of like, for instance, like CRW, you know, with their diversity, Tremaine, Tremaine's role, is that something that we're looking to kind of vision with this role as well?
Yes, and actually, we've been working with Tremaine, so Charlie and I have been working with Tremaine and CRW on, on MBEWV issues with some of our joint contracts because we are contracted, cities contracted with CRW on Impact Harrisburg and, you know, with our playgrounds, our five playgrounds are contracted with CRW. So we do have to work with them. We do have to work with them. And we're doing, I think, we're showing a really good partnership. We just presented a public meeting a few weeks ago at, at CRW to talk about small business issues, not just MBEWV, but how can small businesses participate? And I think that's one of the issues. When we talk about participation, how do we get those small businesses to get up to that level to participate? How can they get training to understand how do you, how do you work with a prime? How do you, how are you able to fill out the documents that you can, you can get on this? So it's not just going out and saying, yeah, we want more participation. We want that pool to be different. So that's what we're, that's what Charlie and I and CRW and Tremaine have all been working on, all those issues. And I think it's, so far, it's worked out pretty well. We're working, as I said, with some of our other business development partners like SCORE, like SBBC, like MNT Bank. They have a small business development core that talks about small businesses and MBEWV. So we are calling all those partners to the table, and we are, Charlie and I already developed some strategies to continue that. We're going to be having some more outreach meetings on a continual basis so that the public knows that we're out there, we're serious about this, and we want to help them doing things like work and tile licenses and understanding codes and zoning and the bidding process and bonding, you know, how to create small businesses of assets, bonding. and the bidding process and bonding, you know, how to get small businesses to ask us bonding, how do you, how do we do it? Insurances, they have to have liability insurance, and some, you know, small businesses don't always understand those intricacies of starting a small business. So Charlie and I have been working on strategies to, you know, to work with our partners to make sure that we do that outreach.
Thank you. But in regards to just like this, the MBE concentration oven, like I know, you know, Tremaine has an active role in actually participating in like the whole, you know, when bid packages are awarded, making sure contractors are truly hitting the requirements as part of that process.
And we did that, we did that with Devin on the monthly...
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, I feel like right now, as far as the way kind of our bidding process work, it's still, it's still almost decentralized away from departments. And, and would Charlie be more integrated in the opening of, you know, of being more integrated in those different bid projects and packages as far as...
He can, he can talk to it.
Yeah, and also, also remember, as the LERT administrator, we have the minority business component in our LERTA bill, so that already has to be tracked, and so there's good connectivity there.
I think with some of the stuff that Mark touched on, as far as the processes that we're going through right now, just looking at it overall as far as the program, and then trying to take out some of the barriers that were in place currently. And from there, just moving forward and making it more streamlined for the individual to come in. I think for, for us, at least discussing with Jackie, it's just the outreach effort. Because businesses change a lot, at least as far as their information, the data collection that's out there for telephone numbers, email addresses, things of that nature. So we're just working on a plan to do more outreach, and I think that's, that would address a lot of the concerns council has as far as, you know, at least getting the word out there and what is actually needed in order to bid on particular jobs.
Yeah, like I said, I think, you know, that's, that's one aspect of it, but then there's another aspect of it when we start to get, you know, our bid documents in, you know, of kind of truly saying, you know, whatever our goals, our aspirational goals, and what direction we decide to move forward. As far as, I just know in other, it's almost like, so I feel like in other places, more like a compliance manager type of thing. But, and I know, I know as far as with CRW, that they're using Tremaine to be that compliant person in regards to MBEWV.
Well, Charlie has a, has a form that we've already, he's already developed it, and he's handed out to Wayne and, you know, for Public Works, and we use it in Parks and Rec, and it's something that we're going to do, I think, to the city to make identity compliant.
I'm just trying to make sure, I'm just trying to make sure, like, you know, I'm, I'm always going to be the person to ask the tough question when it comes to the topic. I want to make sure that when it comes to, you know, we're saying that we're, you know, we're having Charlie inside his role, that he's in, in power inside those roles to kind of, you know, know what's going on across departments. Because each department has, you know, we as a city should establish that goal, what that looks like. And I think if he's the person who's that, you know, touching the basis, you know, with these small contractors, small businesses and minority businesses, you know, he also has to be on the, on the other end of side of knowing what's going on throughout, you know, purchasing and bidding within the city. And if he's not included in that, those opportunities are going to be disconnected, and they're going to be missed.
And we've begun part of that discussion since January. I just, we, Mark, Jackie, Hillary, Purchase Department. Ryan is also working on updating some of the forms that we had, moving them to seamless doc. So we are condescending, you know, at least to that, of the, the process that we have right now, and just trying to modify it to make it more user-friendly. And from my standpoint, at least from the LERTA, the LERTA side of it, I think implementing different forms that we have as far as, just for tracking purposes for contractors, and it's also communicating to those, those primes to tell them, hey, look, you know, we're, this is the goal that we need, and then working with them to also develop their own, you know, almost like prerequisites what they have as far as working with them. And then we can kind of work from there and provide more opportunities and more workshops to tell people, okay, this is what you need to kind of bring to the table. And like I said, we, we've begun that process. Even if you go online right now onto the city's website, you know, we've slowly started to integrate some of the stuff. I just think it needs to be, you know, tweaked here and there. But we will update the, the website to reflect some of that, you know, some of those changes. You know, part of it was moving away from actually having the certification because, like they mentioned, the outside of the city or even inside the city is not really, you know, utilized by other agencies. So if you go on to PFJ, you still have to do an application for them. If you go on to CRW, they want you to go through UCPC or DOT to get their certification. So just removing that barrier and just understanding that, hey, you know, there's other entities that we need to, to kind of direct people to, and then still have them come back to us to, you know, to help them navigate how to get on different projects and stuff. We started that too with the, I think with the lawn maintenance. We started a process, you know, as far as sending out the notifications and just putting things in place to make it more accessible for everybody that's, you know, that's in this area. Thank you.
Les? Thank you. Go ahead and put this on the agenda for tomorrow. Can I conclude with a question?
Thank you. Moving on with the work session, I am now opening up the public comment. Please come to the mic now, please.
Good evening. I'm Dave Schuman, 210 Hur. Really grateful of the impact because when I showed up here in '73, I had to start myself in business, and it was basically by myself. This would be very important to have some input from finances and some good guidances. Okay, number two is the fact I'm really grateful doing the Citizens Police Academy because I'm getting some very good education now because I really have said in the past, I've done some crime watch, and we need to have more and more of the community involvement. Okay? Next one is I have submitted some letters to you regarding street cleaning and when it's the wrong way on the streets and things like that. So when I give these things to you, this is from Nextdoor. So whenever I give these things to you, there's a lot of people behind me. And what I've now stated to them that when it's time that I'm going to submit a letter to you, then the rest, there's no more complaints. Just amazing that it's now taking place. So at some point, I would really like to, in the future, of whatever I've given into you, whatever feedback I could get back, so I could share it to Nextdoor.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? No, no one else? Okay. Work session is adjourned.